Good morning, everyone. It's a special day with this nice crowd we have. Welcome, everyone, to May 14th Board of Supervisors meeting. I'd call it to order at this time and Mr. Slade doesn't mind if you do the invitation, and I would sure appreciate it. Thank you.
Father, it's always good to have our friends with us, our leadership with us, Father, to have folks that we want to honor and to thank with us at this time and to invoke your blessing on our time. Father, that's the most important thing that we can accomplish today. Thank you for your presence with us. Thank you, Father, for your guidance, for your care, your provision, how you bless our community, how you provide for us in terms of those who can lead out, who can see out beyond just today, Father, to anticipate issues that we may have to face. Thank you for giving these men behind me the wisdom that they need today, the discernment that they need to make good decisions. And so, we pray, Father, that you will bless and honor our time and that it will be powerfully effective and it will move our community forward across that event.
Next, we have public comment of our Rankin County Senators and Representatives, and I want to say, this is special and we're so glad to have you here and have this time to have you all here. This is part of what sets Rankin County aside from all others, and like I've said before, you can go to other places and they ask, "How do y'all get along and work so well together? And how's Rankin County moved?" And this is how. Because we all, whether we can agree or disagree, but the bottom line is, we know that we want to move Rankin County forward and can't say enough for what you all do for us and working with us. But that's all of the leadership throughout Rankin County, works together well, whether it be the mayors, the people here at the county, you all, all our legislators, the governor, the senate governor, and we just appreciate you and have a special time to recognize y'all and we just, we want to know how much we appreciate you and work with us. Thank you.
Gentlemen, I'm going to ask you to come forward because we definitely want to memorialize this occasion. We don't give enough opportunities to thank our state level leadership for all of the work that you do, and I can't really add a whole lot more to what Jared has already said, except to echo it and maybe to give a couple of actual details that are specific. So, I am calling the names of our elected officials at the state level in no particular order. I want to make that abundantly clear. Senator Dean Kirby, I want you to come forward. Senator Josh Harkins, you guys come forward. We did not start with the Senate side for any particular purpose, other than to say we have two, our two senate representatives here with us today and we're really pleased to have you guys come. Representative Jim Newman, come forward. Representative Brent Powell. Representative Tom Wethersby. And Representative Lee Yancey. Lee, put your foot down. Come forward, please. These guys, these guys serve, to suggest that it's a part-time job is a little silly in my estimation. These guys serve way above and beyond the call of duty, helping Rankin County specifically and our citizens have access to resources that without those resources, this board would be hamstrung trying to get done what needs to be done for our county. So, you guys need to know that you guys serve a critical role in helping us to get access to resources that move this county forward. We are well positioned because we have such good leadership at the state level. We have access to resources in the short term. I don't want you to think that we're through asking, okay? What we have access to resources in the short term, and what I mean by the short term, within the next year, we're going to see some benefits, some fruits of the labor that are going to help to move Rankin County forward. I wanted to highlight a couple of ways that these guys right here went to bat for us in Rankin County and were able to secure the help that we need. Rankin County is privileged in that this board saw the need for us to be on the same page, cities and county, other political subdivisions coming to the table to help us with our stormwater management. We hound y'all constantly about our stormwater drainage issues in Rankin County. Those are abundant in supply and it's difficult to get your hand around them when we're hamstrung at the constitutional level and we can't own private property to do things. So, this board has seen the wisdom to come forward with a plan, some type of plan, that eventually will lead to solutions to those systemic problems. And you guys see the benefit of that and you said, "You know what? We want to participate in that." And so, because of the work of the legislature, we were able to secure $2 million, help us move our stormwater management plan forward. Man, that is, that is a critical investment in helping Rankin County to address a problem that has been with us for decades and we're going to have to deal with it. And you know what the thing is? It is countywide. It hits every square inch of this county and affects every square inch of this county. And so, the benefit of that effort to get those resources is a countywide impact. I can't say enough, thank you, you guys, for going to bat for us and helping us get that program. You've probably heard occasionally, we've had some issues on some of our major road projects. Two of our biggest road projects in this county that have been on the drawing board for more than a decade have had some challenges. We've had some challenges with some funding issues and the legislature went to bat for us and helped us to secure the funding we had to have to be able to move those projects forward. They won't have to be delayed. That was a very real prospect because of the work of these men right here. So, both Gun Road and Andrew Chapel Road, both of which are critically vital projects for this county, are going to be able to move forward on a timely basis because the legislature helped us. So, those are two specific things, among many others, that you guys have helped us with. And you know, I can't specifically thank you guys enough individually, so we're doing it together with you in this format to say, "Thank you for doing what you do to help us." And it does not go unnoticed and it is appreciated and we are going to continue to hound you in the future because y'all are good at what you do. All right? Thank you for coming today and letting us tell you how much we appreciate you.
Can y'all shift over? Three pieces.
Notice how definitely we didn't let y'all speak?
All right, man, ain't gonna change.
All right, stay in the order here. I know about half of y'all, but from left to right, tell me your name and title.
Yeah, it's like he don't know y'all. Nerd. All right, man. Appreciate all y'all coming to see.
Absolutely.
Appreciate you coming to see.
Yeah, yeah, right. Eugene.
Josh. Dean. All right, I appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all for all the help.
All right, see you.
It's early yet. It's early. Hey, Tom? Can you see, brother?
Yes, sir.
As always, your honor. Yeah. See you, man.
God, mind if I take my breakfast?
Yeah, yes, more was out there.
Please take some more.
Okay, that was, that was special, but we're fortunate today to have another special recognition. Probably Trump's right up there with this one. Presentation of 2021 recipient of Mississippi, the MAS County Employee Scholarship Award. And this time, we'd like Mr. Michael Chase Smith. Honored to do this for you. Glad you're here.
Yes, sir. I've got documentation.
Right.
This is Chase. He goes by Chase. Michael Chase Smith.
Chase.
Come forward, Chase. We're so pleased that you presented to us.
Glad to have you.
Chase, the Mississippi Association of Supervisors Public Employee Scholarship Award. That's a $500 award that goes to an outstanding student who's nominated and selected by the Association of Supervisors. And we have the privilege of honoring Chase here with us today. I talked to Chase before. He actually is better known as our HR Director's grandson. So, Cherry, if you'll come forward, I want her to come and stand by her grandson. Cherry Flanagan, who is our HR Director here for the county, is at least partially responsible for Chase being up here today. And so, we want to say how proud we are of Chase. I asked him before the meeting today to tell me where he was headed.
Not Alabama, hopefully.
Well, Jay, not everybody can get into Alabama. So, that's, that's just the way it works. Actually, to be eligible for this scholarship, the recipient has to indicate on his application that he's intending to attend a Mississippi public university. That's one of the requirements. So, Jay, you don't have to ever worry about us honoring one of the MAS recipients going out of state like that. That won't happen.
Much less Alabama.
Yeah, exactly. So, without further ado, I asked Chase to tell me what he was going to be studying and after about four sentences, I said, "I'm not going to ever be able to remember this." So, I want Chase to tell you what he's going to be studying at Mississippi State as an entering freshman. Chase?
I will be studying wildlife fisheries and aquaculture slash law conservation.
Okay. So, Chase is going to be a game warden. So, get, get ready. If you're not in compliance, within about four years, Chase is going to know that you're not in compliance. So, fair warning. Chase, we are so proud to be able to present to you this check and the amount of $500 that is representative of your having been selected as the MAS County Employee Scholarship recipient for Rankin County. There you go. That's the most important thing that I'm going to hand you today. This is a certificate that's suitable for framing that indicates your recipient award and I want to hand that to you. Those documents mean that Rankin County and its citizens are very proud of you. It also means that you have, you have some responsibility now to go to Mississippi State and represent Rankin County in a good way. And that includes good grades, good behavior, all those things that your grandmother has already indicated to you. So, we are super proud to be able to honor you today. Congratulations. Congratulations, man.
Okay. Guess who's next? Carl Franco, J H N H. Yeah. We have, you have a resolution for us or we need? You have some tough acts to follow, don't you?
I do have some tough acts and I just wanted to say that sometimes we're willing to go the distance for our clients in dealing with contractors and sometimes there are consequences and...
Yeah, been a rough one, hasn't it?
It has been rough. I have a few, several topics to go with today. Wanted to start with the transfer renovation. As you may remember, we found some potential structural issues in the basement area of first floor. We've, we've had the structural survey done and have his recommendations back. They were, they looked at every wood column down there and wood beams. The results of his recommendations were that out of the 11 wood columns, he recommended that nine of them be replaced with some steel columns. Which they, the interesting thing is, and we don't have the history behind that, there's already been some in the past replaced with steel columns. So, there, he recommended nine of 11 be replaced with four-inch tubes like's already there. We, we would suggest going ahead and replacing them all, additional two more.
I figured, say, why don't you still them all?
And, you know, the cost is hard right now trying to determine the cost, but we think the cost of that would add about 15, 16, $17,000 to the project. The beams he looked at, he felt like they were, even though some of them had some checking and some issues, he felt like that they, they were all in, in pretty good condition.
Steel beams?
No, they're wood beams there. They're wood beams.
That's the part I don't understand. If they're in good condition, why are we replacing them?
No, the beams, but not the columns. The columns are, yeah. We were looking at, I was really concerned that we were going to have to replace the beams. The column, replacing the columns is fairly simple. We can, we can have some jacks that hold, hold up the beams while the columns are removed and then they just put back the steel tubes. So, it's pretty simple, but replacing the beams is going to be a much more expensive and difficult process. So, we came out lucky there. We also found there were a couple, that structure at the basement is wood columns, wood beams, and wood joists. And there were a couple of joists that were warped, but we think that that can be solved by simply putting some additional bridging in those, just to, as you're probably aware, just to give it some additional lateral. And that's, that's basically no cost, really, very minor cost. So, that's, that's what we would, we would recommend if the board wants to go along that way. We would recommend that that be added to the construction contract as opposed to doing it in-house, just so that it's covered.
Let me ask you, how tall are these columns?
I want to say, yeah, eight foot. Eight, eight to nine foot, somewhere in that range.
I mean, I know exactly. I've done this. I know exactly what you're doing. That seems high. That seems high.
The cost? It may be. Jared, what I'm, what we're seeing right now...
Because jacking it up is not, not a problem. Not hard to do.
It may not be near that cost. We're just, to be honest with you, our estimates right now are getting killed because of everything that's going on with materials and labor, transportation costs, just everything. So, I think that is probably high.
Four-inch column, quarter-inch?
Yeah, something like that.
You're looking at about 100 bucks a column.
Okay.
I mean, yeah.
So, so it may be a lot less than that. It's just that we can't, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit with CMRLS. They're, they're having trouble getting materials and stuff at any cost right now, especially metals, steel.
They need tubing out. There's no problem.
Really?
It comes from my shop three times a week.
Okay.
Four-inch column, just like you're talking about.
Okay.
Probably quarter wall or three-eighths wall.
Okay. Well, I may be, like I say, high.
Yeah.
I didn't check with suppliers. I'm just, we're just getting killed on our estimates right now, so I'm kind of being conservative. So, I hope that's the case.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't want to look at it, oh, this is county, this is county for government project. We're going to run the price up.
Okay.
I mean, you can change out, you can change out three a day.
Well, what we can do...
Well, I mean, you could change out three a day.
We can, we can actually bid that as an alternate.
Yeah, I like that idea.
And if we don't, if we think the price is too high, then the county employees can do it.
Yeah.
So, we'll do that, we'll do it that way then. We'll get a number.
We'll get, get a number. See, I just, I just familiar with what you're doing and that sounded, I'd love to have the job, 15,000.
So, I mean, why don't we just put it as alternate and go ahead and let the contract, so let the bid or advertise it, so we can get going with it.
We can do that because I think we're through with everything else. That's the only thing we're like...
Put it out for them?
Yeah. So, the beams are, beams are showing right now. You can see the beams.
Right, right, right.
All it requires is a jack on each side.
Yeah.
To hold that support, have the column ready, take that one out, slip the other in.
That's what...
Base plate on bottom, base plate on top.
That's exactly right. They just got to connect them and, and, like I said, we were, I think, I personally think we were fortunate because just me looking at it, I was thinking those beams, some of those beams were going to have to be replaced and that, that was going to be much more complicated.
Carl, will, will there be any remediation on the, the concrete flooring where the beams are currently down into the concrete?
Uh, no, they, they will be able to put a base plate on them and I think shoot some bolts into the slab is what we're thinking.
Yeah. So, they actually went through into the concrete, the wood? So, you're just going to saw it off there?
No, they're on the, they're on the base.
Oh, they're just sitting?
Yeah, they're sitting on the base, yeah.
Yeah. We just put a wide base plate?
Yeah, that's all we're going to do, yeah.
It's going to be very, be narrow probably because it goes inside a wall?
Uh, yeah, now, the base plate will be, like I say, maybe quarter-inch thick or something like that.
No, you need, you need half at least.
Yeah, okay. Well, then, the other option is, that's, the only thing that that presents a problem with is when you come back to put, if you have put your carpet or whatever on there, you didn't...
You're not case surrounded already?
They're not right now.
Oh, oh.
But we, that I remember. I'll double check it, but I don't think they are.
Yeah, okay.
Carl, is there anything about the replacement of the columns that, that would, that would eliminate some contractors from being able to bid?
No.
There's nothing special?
No, no, they're just, no. They're just, they're, I think they're eight by eight columns and it's typical, since I worked in my uncle's lumber company for about eight years, coming in high school and middle school. Checking is kind of typical with moisture content, but these just got to be more than just regular checking. They're, they're, they just split almost an inch. Some of them are inch wide to cracks and...
So, you're going back with the four by four, where these were eight by eight?
Yeah, they'll be small. I mean, you don't need...
Right, right.
Jared, yeah. That's what's, some of them had apparently, I assumed that in, over the history of the project, they were all wood columns and four or five of them had already been replaced with some four by four steel tubes. So, we're just going back. The structural engineer decides that, that's adequate for what the loads. And I guess what will happen in the future, and we're not, all we were going to do in this project is replace them. We weren't going to fur around them or anything, but if you want to finish out that basement in the future, you can fur around it with chipboard and blocking and that kind of thing. We could...
Quarter would probably be okay with just simply load bearing straight out on it.
Yeah.
Now, the difference in price would be, what I'm telling you is like quarter wall and I don't know if he's asking for three-eighths wall.
I have not, yeah, I haven't looked at them.
It would be a little more, but yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
But that's where we're at on, on the transfer renovation. So, if that's suitable with the board, we'll go ahead and include that in the construction project and get the bid documents finalized to, probably come before you next meeting.
Jay, do you want to do that in additional business? Is that okay? We're marketing additional. All right.
Okay.
The next thing is a new courthouse project. We have finally, we've gotten the final pay application. We're reviewing it right now from the contractor. Just as a recap, there's still 1,344,470 left in the project and there was a change order 11, which is giving back to the county a credit of 100 and, I think it's 182,000. So, that'll be deducted from the, from the, from the final price. And then, there's, you know, some negotiations to be done on liquidated damages or whatever else the county chooses. I guess we've got a meeting next week to, to review those.
So, we received the final payout when, Carl, when did they submit?
Uh, last week. I was out, I think, so I just got it this week.
Okay.
Probably last Friday, maybe.
Roughly another 40 days for us to review the final payout and, and ultimately act on it. So, there's plenty of time for you guys to, to consider all of the issues and, and so, we're going to have some, we're going to have a couple of meetings and we're going to have some conversations about that and try to get to a point where we can present you guys with a, with an outcome and you'll have an opportunity to consider that. Okay?
And going back to the leak from the, what we, the conduit boxes, that, all those conduits had now been sealed, that was one of the actions, reseal exterior and interior. We've had apparently ceasefire, been out there and checked them, just, just to make sure. They were looking in all the boxes and, and they had checked them. The other action that we've recommended be done on, on the telecom box and even, I guess, underneath the AT&amp;T box, is add a, a pipe to drain it, any water out. What we assumed in, in all our investigations was happening was water, those boxes have no bottoms in them, but water was coming in from other boxes higher up and getting into these boxes and then the water was floating up above the conduit. And so, the water was draining into the conduit and the conduit went into the building. So, sealing, resealing all the conduit with a different type of sealant should solve that, but as an insurance, we, we recommend putting a little pipe drain in there so that the water can never build up regardless. So, and I think the county personnel are going to do that. So, that's, you know, that should, I say that, that should solve any issue. I don't think we've had any leak through the conduit since the last rain. So, that was done about three weeks ago or so and we'll get some more rains next week, so we'll, we should know. So, that's, that's where that's at on that and we'll, if the contractor is responsible for not having it sealed properly, then we'll address that in this other, as we're closing out the documents. The third, the third item, I just wanted to tell you, the CMRLS, we did have pre-construction meeting. Y'all, y'all issued the notice to proceed. In our meeting, the roofer said, and he would start, he's ordering, ordering his materials. It'd take about six weeks to get here and then take about a month to actually do the work. So, they had 120 days, which would put finishing it at August 19th, 2021. He did notify us this week that he was having trouble getting tapered insulation, which is on, goes on the roof. And they were telling him four to six months to get tapered insulation. He's looking, he's looking for some, some other suppliers, but that is, we are seeing that across the board in all materials. PVC costs have gone up. Lumber, obviously, y'all know about. We're seeing it in everything. Just getting it is a problem. Pre-engineered buildings, we've been told six to nine months that you can get a pre-engineered building. I found out this week that if you're, if you're not negotiating that, they're not even talking to their contractors who are bidding projects, just negotiating contracts. So, we'll keep, we're, we're keeping on that. I've asked for documentation on that. I'm not just going to take, you know, we're not just going to take what they tell us, but, but, so just to let you know on that, as soon as I get any documentation, I'll, I'll let you know how that's coming. But that's where we're at on those projects. Y'all have any questions or anything that we need, else we need to do or... Okay, well, I appreciate it. Hopefully, next time I'll...
It's sad they made you start working in the fifth grade, though.
Yeah, well, that's just, I'm a low man on the toe of the pole.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you. Okay. About a motion, except old business, approve of it.
Motion.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Jay. All in favor of saying aye? All oppose? Senator agenda? Any questions on that?
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Jay. Any questions? All in favor of saying aye? All oppose?
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Did a great job. Okay. Ms. Bridget Herring, you got a whole list for us, haven't you?
Good morning. Good morning. Our first item this morning is, we had the reverse auction yesterday for one or more single axle dump trucks. We had one unpriced proposal and one person truck from Truck Works. The reverse auction price came in at 98,500. We had some little issues with the bid that I'm going to let Craig jump in here and discuss regarding the specs.
Hang on before we get in that. Reverse auction, it's coming to an end, right?
No, not for equipment, only for term bids, so I will not have to do it anymore for my term bids. Equipment will remain on there.
Are you serious? I thought they gave us an option to not do it.
No.
All right.
Hey, we'll take what they get, baby steps, maybe next year.
Yep. Slowly but surely, not having to do term bids by reverse auction is huge.
Very appreciative of their work.
That was probably, I'm going to guess, I'm putting words in Bridget's mouth, that's probably 80% or more of our confusion, slowness, difficulties.
Something that never should have enforced, start with.
It should never have been enforced. It didn't make a lick of sense that we would have people from Georgia bidding on sending gravel to us. That kind of thing just doesn't make a lick of sense.
And it's changing the process from a six to seven month process to back to my six to eight weeks.
Yeah. So, a big thank you again. I probably should have mentioned that when we were recognizing our legislators. That was a huge lift that, that took multiple sessions to get done, by the way.
Uh, yeah, basically, I'll be representing John to do a petition for change for the assessment on the twenty-twenty real property and the twenty-eighteen and twenty-twenty personal property assessment rolls.
Motion.
Motion by Steve, second by Brad. All in favor of saying aye? All opposed?
Thank you very much.
Did a great job. Okay, Ms. Bridget Herring, you got a whole list for us, haven't you?
Good morning.
Good morning. Our first item this morning is, we had the reverse auction yesterday for one or more single axle dump trucks. We had one unpriced proposal and one person truck, from Truck Works. The reverse auction price came in at ninety-eight thousand, five hundred. We had some little issues with the bid that, um, I'm gonna let Craig jump in here and discuss regarding the specs.
Hang on before we get in that, uh, reverse auction, it's coming to an end, right?
No, not for equipment, only for term bids. So I will not have to do it anymore for my term bids. Equipment will remain on there.
Are you serious? I thought they gave us an option to not do it.
No.
Alright.
Hey, we'll take what they get, baby steps, maybe next year.
Yep. Slowly but surely, not having to do term bids by reverse auction is huge.
Very appreciative of their work.
Uh, that was probably, I'm gonna guess, I'm putting words in Bridget's mouth, that's probably eighty percent or more of our confusion, uh, slowness, difficulties.
Something that never should have enforced.
It should never have been enforced. It didn't make a lick of sense that we would have people from Georgia bidding on sending gravel to us. That kind of thing just doesn't make a lick of sense.
And it's changing the process from a six to seven month process to back to my six to eight weeks.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, a big thank you again. I probably should have mentioned that when we were recognizing our legislators. That was a huge lift that, that, that took multiple sessions to get done, by the way. Alright, so that's not why we're here talking. The, uh, the, the bidder, the only bidder to present the non-priced response to our specifications. By, but basically what that means is, we have a process that if you're gonna participate in our equipment reverse bid, the first thing you have to do is, you have to show us how you can meet the requirements of our bid. There's no pricing involved at that level, but you have to, you have to show us how you're gonna meet our specifications before you even have an opportunity to bid. That, does that make sense? We don't want people going through the process of reverse bidding and they don't have equipment that meets our specs. So we get a pre-look at the specs. In this particular case, we set up some pretty aggressive specs on our dump truck equipment. We require them to do some things that are pretty unique. The, the trucks themselves have to meet a very high standard to accomplish what we want our trucks to accomplish. And so it's a weeding out process, uh, by virtue of that. One of the things that we want is equipment that works. And when we have a problem and we have to turn a piece of equipment in for maintenance or for repair, we expect that truck to get turned around to us immediately, as soon as possible. And they have to commit on the front end. If they can't get that truck turned around to us within twenty-four hours, they have to, and that's working hours, by the way, they have to supply us with a piece of equipment that is as close or identical. And this particular bidder, the only one to respond, said, "We can't commit to that." So that's a deviation from the specs that you guys have to tell us whether or not you are comfortable with us doing that. But there was one other issue, if I recall correctly, that has to do with the, remind me.
Yes, in the specs, it requires them to submit a pre-qualification attachment on their proposal. And it pretty much just goes down their information, agreeing that they meet all specs, um, that they can provide the equipment in a certain amount of time, just a few things. And that's just supposed to be the cover and they failed to do so.
Yeah, they didn't, uh, they didn't fully comply with our pre-bid qualification form work. They didn't complete the cover sheet.
How long will it be before they can provide?
They, they don't indicate. They just say that we will work with your road department and your road manager to try to get the equipment prioritized for repair purposes and get it turned around to you.
Is that the only one to bid on it?
That's right.
Well, I can kind of understand them not being able to put something identical. If we got special things we order.
The issue is, is on the twenty-four, we had done this previous on some other dump trucks. But right now with the way things are in parts, that's where they have to hang up. They just can't, they may not be able to do the part.
Oh, you're saying twenty-four hours to repair or something?
Right.
Oh, I thought you meant deliver from the time we.
Something identical, but they're just, everybody's short on trucks. They just don't have the supply and they.
When you hear twenty-four hours, I want you to think three days too, because it's basically, that's three eight-hour working days that we give them. So when we say a twenty-four hour period, we, we tell them in there, by the way, that's working hours. But the, the, I think some of them are maybe glossing over and just assuming that's a one-day turnaround on a repair.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we give them the three days to get something turned around to us on a repair and then we expect them to put us in a truck. Because we don't need to be down. We, we need to be, we need to have equipment out in the field working. We got, we're paying employees who are gonna be utilizing that equipment to be there.
That, but it is awful big to tell you, I mean, some things may not be fixed in three days.
Yeah, so what we're seeing is.
And if it's something identical, I don't see how you could hold them to that.
We think this may be circumstantial. We think this may be just a byproduct of the issue with supply and demand on equipment, on materials, on repair services, that type of thing. This is probably a short-term issue. And when I say short-term, maybe the next year it'll resolve. And we'll be able to go back to a situation where we get commitments like that because they have adequate supply.
The shortest trucks everywhere.
Yeah, so it's affecting everybody. Because that's a part of our specs and we feel strongly that it needs to continue to be, we need you guys to tell us that on this occasion, you're willing to allow a deviation from the specs to be able to accept this bid, if you choose to do so. We're taking it under, I expect them to take it under advisement. But the first thing is, you gotta tell us whether or not we can even advise you on this. So we're gonna need a motion that says, "We want to take these bids under advisement and we're willing to excuse the two technical issues, the turnaround on the repairs and the, the fact that they did not include the, the required cover sheet with data on it." Those two issues need to be excused so that we can take this bid under advisement.
Well, the turnaround, but I don't want to leave it open that it sits over there for a month. That's, that's kind of, that's the only, the turnaround. I can see the twenty-four hour turnaround being a problem. But, I mean, they may have to wait three days to get a part.
And I, I don't think we're gonna take this, this one under advisement since we only have one. We can go ahead and act on this one, but.
If we had this verbiage in there and nobody else bid on it except these people, do we know that there was not other people out there that said, "We can't do this. We can't turn it around, so we're just not gonna bid." And then if we give it to these people, they're gonna go, "Well, I would have bid on it if you, we lived it, wasn't in there."
That's really the point.
The biggest thing why we didn't get other bidders is because we are requiring this, we need a quick turnaround, ninety days. Because they're not able to get the equipment, the trucks. That's why a lot of people were unable to bid this time.
They don't have the inventory.
Yes, and that's due to COVID. And that may not be the case next time, but we are requiring ninety days because we are down on trucks.
How long are we planning on keeping these for this?
These are not buybacks. These are.
These are, these are the ones we're gonna buy. Just keep till we run them down.
And also Truck Works, they will work with us.
Is this the money that we got from selling the other trucks? So this is not coming out of anything else?
But it is a very dependable vendor and they will work with us. It's just COVID has kind of thrown a glitch in some of these things.
I see with Steve, he's got a good point to been fair.
Well, any other vendor could have done the exact same thing that this vendor did, Steve, which was to indicate on their specs, "Hey, we'd like to be able to meet that, but we can't. And we're telling you right now, we can't meet that spec. We're gonna submit it anyhow."
But if I'd have seen it, I might would have said, "I ain't not fooling with this. I can't do it."
Alright, so you need a motion to set aside those two requirements?
And award the bid if possible. If, Mike, are you ready to go forward for that?
Alright, I make a motion to set aside those two requirements and, and, uh, award the contract.
Second.
You're gonna leave it open to like, you know, so three days?
We don't have a two weeks, whatever. I don't think we have a way of telling them.
You'll be accepting the bid as presented to you, which is, as I understand it, we will work with your road manager to get the equipment that is under repair turned around as quickly as possible.
Okay, alright. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor of saying aye? All opposed?
Thank you. The next item, I'm requesting authority to advertise term bids for construction of pre-cast bridges.
So move.
Motion by Jay, second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor of saying aye? All opposed?
Next item, I'm requesting renewal of the vending contract with Coombs Distributors for the period of June first, two thousand twenty-one through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
So move.
Motion by Jay, second by Steve. All in favor of saying aye? All opposed?
My final thing, we have several copier contracts. I'm asking for approval of, for Rico with the board office, two for the circuit park and one chance report.
Most approved?
Second. Most approved by Jay, second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor of saying aye? All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Harrison.
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, request approval of ceasefire utility permit to construct fiber optic service along and across spillway road installed between Grant's Ferry and Hidden Hills. That'd be District.
Most approved.
Most approved by Jay, second by Steve. All in favor of saying aye? All opposed?
Request approval for Comcast utility permit to construct fiber optic cable along and across Andrew Chapel installed between Baker Lane and Chukum Bridge, District Four.
Motion.
Approved by Steve, second by Jay. Any discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
I have a discussion. I have a.
Comcast is back in business.
Utility permit.
Yeah.
That was my discussion. Um, are, are we charging for permits on these guys now?
No.
Now, this is actually B is a relocation of that project, Steve. This is the last utility we had.
I got you.
I believe, am I right, Craig? That was the last utility we had on that project of a relocation. But they was having to wait the energy. They was actually on energy disposal. Now they're going underground.
Right.
Hey, hey, Mike.
Put the tarmac on gunner too.
Before you leave from up there, what's the latest on our spraying?
Uh, I'm ready if y'all are ready to act on the, uh,
How well did it work?
Last year, uh, Craig, our professional service deal, I believe.
Right now, the deal is, it's so wet, you can't really bush-hog.
Y'all got two, if I recall, it was two sprays. It was six months apart, uh, and there was a, there was a charge, but it's all professional service. Um, and, and so that is the way y'all handled it. You have the ability on professional service to just directly contract with one provider or you can do an R and D. It's up to y'all.
But I've got the contract on, I've got the contract on my desk, uh, if y'all want to approve it.
Did they spray Old Fanny Road?
We didn't this year.
Okay, I'd be saying those weeds grow fast, man.
We didn't this year because I hadn't got it done on it. So we actually had been spraying that retardant on it to stunt the grass. But we, I hadn't done the contract yet. But I do have the contract if y'all want to add this to the agenda, uh.
I, I've got it noted on additional businesses that you guys will take it in.
That's fine. Thank you.
Unless y'all got specific questions, Mike.
No, good.
Y'all have a strong feeling as to whether or not you go out for R and D? You can do that informally, by the way. You ask your road manager to check prices with other vendors and suppliers.
I don't know, is there any other interest?
There is one person that's interested, but he can't, he's not gonna be able to, I don't think, get rigged up quick enough to at least do this first round of spraying.
Keep in mind that people that spray herbicide, especially on public right of way, have got to have licensure. They need to be bonded. They got to have all the insurance requirements. There's an agreement that we want to go into with these folks. And so, uh, it, it's not really something that a, um, it's not a pastime hobby type situation. We need roads that are in that.
Professional service.
But I, I'll be honest with you, Jay, we, as far as I know, and I mean, I've got them documented, we had two complaints last year out of them spraying the whole county.
Six hundred miles.
Sent the complaints to them. Within two days, it was resolved.
Well, I, my concern is, is it worth it, you know? So as long as, as long as it's doing it, it was supposed to.
I mean, it's, it's cutting the way down on the bush hogging. I mean, right now, we're trying to bush hog the one time to clean up the right of ways to make them look good. Just get rid of the winter stuff and then we're ready to start treating and, and then, I know we, we saved some rounds last year.
But that doesn't, that really doesn't do much for the, I mean, you're gonna take the bush hogs and cleaning the stuff that's draped over and where you're cutting out vision and stuff.
Right, well, we do actually two applications, Jared. We do a floor spraying and then we got what I call a wall spraying.
But I mean, to get that on out of the way, that, you need to go get the bush hogs on there. The, the stuff that's hanging out, yeah, bush hogs, you need to go cut that. Yeah, you can't just wait on that wall spray. Right. Oh, I agree. Oh, I agree. Yeah, but I think we sold the long arm, so.
We sold two long arms, two old ones, but I mean, we, we got our system back and that's where we're gonna try to do the wall spraying.
Right, okay.
We got it back. We can treat it right now. Young vegetation, we can keep it from growing every year. So, thank y'all.
Thank you.
I don't know if we vote on B, uh, the contract.
No, uh, we sit and we have a motion and a second.
I interrupted.
Yeah. Uh, all in favor of saying aye? All opposed? Tim Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item we have is Bethel Place Subdivision. We recommend an approval of the preliminary plat. That's a District Three development.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Most approved by Brad, second by myself. All in favor of saying aye? All opposed?
Item B, Mr. President, is Millamiee Subdivision Phase Three. We recommend an approval of the, of the preliminary plat. That's a District Four development.
Motion. Second.
Most approved by Steve, second by Jay. All in favor of saying aye? All opposed?
Item C involves the state aid programs that we've submitted to state aid. If you'll recall, we submitted two programs. One was an overlay project and one was a micro seal and ultra-thin project. The overlay project has been approved by state aid, uh, but they're requesting on the micro seal and the ultra-thin that we split that project up. They like to keep the seal projects in the, they're considering the ultra-thin and overlay. And, uh, so we're just requesting authority to take one, that one program and split it into one or two programs as directed by state aid.
Okay.
Same, same dollar figures and everything.
Chairman.
Motion by Jay, second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor of saying aye? All opposed?
Thanks.
Thank you, Tim.
Gentlemen, before I start my section, I wanted to specifically and publicly, publicly say how much I appreciate our staff helping us this morning with our breakfast items to host our state legislators. That was an excellent treat and I'm so appreciative of that. And it's, quite honestly, it's nice to be back where we can actually have food and coffee to be served. Uh, and so I, I'm very grateful and appreciative of that. Ms. Laura was very actively involved in that process and I wanted to specifically mention her and say thank you to her for helping us with that this morning. It's a great treat and I, I really appreciate it.
They said they got here at five-thirty to do all that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I, I, you know.
That's what the lady said.
The only person that I would believe is here at five-thirty is Janice Dandy. And, uh, more than likely, she was here at five-thirty.
They spent the night.
So, Ms. Janice, can you confirm, can you confirm whether anybody else was here with you at five-thirty? Alright, you don't have to answer that. Uh, gentlemen, the first items under my section, if I can get a, a lump here of A, B, C, D, and E, is to set public hearings for June three at nine AM. Those will be for nuisance property considerations.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Make a motion by Brad, second by Steve. Any discussion? Set these public hearings. All in favor of saying aye? All opposed?
Mr. President, item F is to set a public hearing for a rezoning request in District Three. That would be for June seven at nine AM.
I'll make that motion.
First by Brad, second by Jay, all in favor of Steve, all in favor of saying aye? All opposed?
Uh, item G, Mr. President, is a public hearing for the Carl Taylor Conditional Use Permit at Seven Bonaparte Street. This is District Four property. Mr. Taylor is seeking a conditional use permit to construct a five thousand square foot metal building house at Seven Bonaparte Street. That's Lot Fifty-four, La Boujwa Estate, Part Four, three-point-two acre parcel. Property is owned RE One. The metal exterior is not allowed in the RE One zone, which is why we're having a conditional use hearing. The home will contain twenty-six hundred square feet of living space and a garage area of twenty-four hundred square feet. This item was originally planned on the January twenty-eighth Planning Commission Agenda. It's been on hold due to restrictive covenants in, in La Boujwa, Part Four. Mr. Taylor provided a copy, I'm sorry, a document signed by all of the property owners in La Boujwa Estate, wherein they acknowledged their agreement and approval for the board supervisors to approve the variance to allow the construction of a residential steel building on Lot Fifty-four, La Boujwa Subdivision, Part Four. The document's been recorded in the land records. So we'll open that public hearing and I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Carl Taylor Conditional Use Permit request. Anyone here speaking in opposition on that matter? Yes, sir. You'll come forward. Before you begin your remarks, please state your name and address.
Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
My name is Edwin Alford. I live at twelve A, Bonaparte Street. Uh, first thing I heard that I really object to is that all the residents in La Boujwa had signed this. I did not sign it. I've not seen anything to sign for this. This is a metal building. We do not have metal buildings for residents in our area. And it will cause our property values to go down. So I'm very much opposed to this. I won't be on record for that.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate you hearing me.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that, that is correct. Is there someone else?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Same thing.
My name's Daniel Schatz. I live at twenty-seven Marseille. I'm one lot just to the north of this, uh, proposed metal building. And from what I've talked to Mr. Taylor, uh, it was never said or never could get. And from what I've talked to Mr. Taylor, uh, we've never said or never could get a straight answer about when he was moving in to live at the dwelling. And I've heard on multiple occasions that he needs a place to store his toys. Uh, you know, I, I live there, been there for right around thirty years. And I know we've had covenants there, and I've had to live by them, and I, I'm very much against, uh, this, not knowing how long he's gonna be there. Is this gonna be a storage building, or what it's gonna be? So, that's my complaint with it. Wouldn't know him, and you know, I have no problem with metal buildings like this. Out in the county, if you want to build one, I'm for it. I got a friend building one, but I, I just don't think it's the right place for more, where we are. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
My name is Steve Rindfro. I live at nineteen Bastille. That's, uh, I'm three houses from, uh, Mr. Taylor's property. And, uh, I, I don't know Mr. Taylor, he never solicited my signature or anything, but, uh, I've heard from other neighbors that, uh, when explained what this property was gonna be, it, uh, uh, was never really described as, as, um, anything other than a, like a one bedroom, uh, house on part of it with, uh, uh, storage on the other part of it for motorhome and, and other, uh, other, uh, equipment. And, uh, I, you know, I have a nice home, that's my major investment, and, uh, my concern is the same thing as Daniel Schatz and Mr. Alford, is that, uh, uh, you know, I'm sixty-six years old, and, uh, I consider myself a senior now, and it, I think that, uh, Mr. Taylor's at least my age. And I don't know what's gonna happen with him at the property, but after he is no longer here, what's, what's gonna become of a metal building in our subdivision? So, uh, if he wants to live in our subdivision, I think he should just be like the rest of us and build a brick and mortar, and if he wants to have a shop out to the side, build a metal shop out there and live in your dwelling and, and, uh, keep your toys and, and stuff in your shop, uh, or work in your shop like the rest of us do. So, uh, that's, uh, that's my only issue, and I'm not one to, you know, come and complain. Uh, I take this very serious. I'm sure he's a fine fella, and I have no personal animosity, uh, towards Mr. Taylor or anything else, uh, but, uh, you know, I understand that, uh, um... You know, I just would ra, prefer to see, uh, a more conventional home built in the subdivision. If you're gonna be a member of our subdivision, come and just, uh, uh, be like us, you know? Build a house and, and, and a shop. That's, uh, that's what I would solicit the, the board to, uh, uh, take under consideration.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Anyone else?
Yep.
I'm Dan Ellison. I live ten Bonaparte Street, which is right across the street, uh, from the proposed building that Mr. Taylor wants to build. And I'll admit, I did sign the petition that he brought around, uh, but since then, since I signed it, I've, I've found out that a lot of the people that live close to his proposed spot there is opposed to that, so, um, I, I hate that I signed it, and, uh, I'm just telling you that, that I'd rather him not build. If he wants to build a building there, he, he needs to ob, observe the covenants that we have, so...
Thank you.
Anyone else opposed? Hang on. No one else opposed?
Come on, come on up.
Yeah, I'm Cody Smith, uh, nine Bonaparte. Um, you know, I live right next door to Mr. Carl. Carl's a, he's a good guy, uh, Linda's great. Um, but yeah, I don't know, some, some of the stuff with the metal building, I don't know, it does, it does kind of scare me in the respect of, I don't know, property value. My house, I've worked very hard, you know, and making it very nice, spent a lot of money, things like that, and I just, you know, mainly want to make sure that, you know, value, you know, stays with it. And that's my biggest deal, so...
So you want, you, you'd prefer brick and mortar, just like everybody likes the covenant say?
You know, potentially, yeah, that's the thing. I just, I don't know, I just, I just, you know, got to thinking about it, and, you know, it is, it's something, got to looking at it and things like that. I've looked at metal buildings throughout, you know, putting in different places and agricultural ones, but stuff like that, you know, and, you know, I've just kind of seen how it does, and I, I don't know. I'm just kind of scared, you know, being right next door. I just don't know, you know, so, that's kind of my deal with it, so, thank y'all.
I think that's all opposed. The other spokesmen, we don't need to hear again. We're good.
Would you guys like to give Mr. Cooper an opportunity to speak?
Sure, absolutely.
Sure.
Morning.
Good morning, Mr. President, board members. My name is Gaynel Curry. I am a resident at Le Bourgeois. I live at three Delest Street. I've been out there for about, hmm, twenty-three years. One of the unique things about our neighborhood is that we do not have a cookie cutter neighborhood. All homes are not the same. In fact, the covenants in that neighborhood have not been applied or used and expired way before I ever even moved into the neighborhood. The neighborhood is very unique in that it has structures that despite the covenants in the neighborhood and the covenants that apply to the section that Mr. Taylor has, have no brick whatsoever. We have log cabins, we have, um, we don't have any metal buildings yet, but as you all know, structure and construction changes over the years. And now, buildings are being built, homes are being built that are made out of materials that are not commonly used and weren't used forty years ago when this subdivision was developed. Or actually, it may have been over forty years ago. Um, Mr. Taylor did go to all of the residents in the section, because in the, in the neighborhood, there are different covenants that apply to different sections. In other words, the old covenants, the one that my home is under, which I don't have seventy percent brick on my home, my home is cedar, um, with some brick, but you don't even see that from, from the street. Um, those covenants, they're different sections within the subdivision. Mr. Taylor's section has a requirement of seventy percent brick. If you go into that section, you will not find homes with seventy percent brick, because that has not been done in years. And as I said, as time has changed, building materials have changed. And Mr. Taylor's home, which it will be his home, and it sounds to me that there's just been a lot of misinformation, which is not uncommon, um, that has been disassembled through the neighborhood and through the use of social media that, about Mr. Taylor's home. It is in fact a home. It is not going to be a place to store his toys. This is a residential neighborhood, and he wants to live there, and his age, I don't think, should be a factor in whether or not, how long he's going, going to be there or the property values. Somebody's gonna buy this house after he goes and sells, or if he decides to sell at some point in time. So, I think that the board has had before it, most recently, a similar home, which is being built and constructed at what I would call sort of the entrance of Le Bourgeois neighborhood off of Brag Street. This is a similar facility that Mr. Taylor is proposing to build. Um, there's no evidence whatsoever that these type of buildings diminish home values. In fact, home values have been improved with these types of buildings. So I would propose that although, you know, we appreciate everyone's objections, but nothing has been said here that would prohibit the use of, of this type of building as a home. And in fact, I would say to not allow such a variance to build type of home would kind of constitute a taking under, because lumber, y'all pride lumber lately? I mean, it is through the roof. So, Mr. Taylor is wanting to become a part of our neighborhood. He went and took the time and the effort to go forward to talk with all of the people who live in the section that the old covenants apply to his neighborhood. There was one objection, I believe one person who wouldn't sign, which was Mr. Schatz, I believe, was the only person who would not sign. If you go by the old covenants, the covenants say if you get sixty-five percent of the neighbors to approve a variance, then you can do that. So we submit that Mr. Taylor should be allowed to build his home as he is projecting.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks.
Good morning.
Okay, I just got a couple of things. There is one metal home in Le Boui, in, uh, Le Bourgeois. It's, uh, at numbers... Number two Rochelle.
Can I see that?
Number two Rochelle, it's a model, a little...
Can you bring it forward and let us with that? Hey, and state your name and address.
My, alright, my name's Carl Taylor, uh, one eighteen Willacres Circle in Brandon, and, uh, I'm wanting to move into Le Bourgeois, number seven Bonaparte.
Thank you. This is, this is a metal roof, right? Not metal sides? Just metal roof?
Huh?
This is just a metal roof?
It's a metal side, too?
Okay, uh, I got one other picture. Uh, I guess it was Mr. Rindfro was worried about if I sell, what's gonna become of, uh, my home with a big garage? Well, I'd like to present a picture of his home with a metal building in, uh, virtually in his front yard. What's gonna become of that if he decides to sell? And, uh, well, Mr. Schatz has a metal building in his backyard. I mean, uh, what's gonna become of that if somebody gonna, if he ever sells his home? Somebody moves in? Are they gonna open up a garage in that metal building? Uh, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't know, uh, mine's gonna be a home. That's all I got.
With the garage attached to it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It'll, it'll be, right now, five thousand square feet. Twenty-six hundred feet of it, twenty-six hundred square feet will be three bedroom, three bath home. Twenty-four hundred feet of it will be a garage.
Have, have one that's opposing all of this? Have you shown them a picture of it?
Well, I didn't know, I've sho, only one I've showed too is, uh, Mr. Smith and, uh, uh, Mr. Schatz. The other people, I, there's two hundred and fifty people in Le Bourgeois. I couldn't, I, you know, I couldn't go around to all of them.
Yeah.
Uh, I did not, the others I had not shown to, because they weren't in Phase Four.
They need to see it, we've seen it.
But do, do we have ability to put it up there?
Not now.
Not today, alright. But I don't think they oppose, I, I mean, they said if you built a house and then a shop, and I think that's kind of what they said they did. If they built a home and then a shop, I think a couple of gentlemen said, made that comment, uh, I, I don't know what...
Yeah.
So...
Well, uh, I just want to build them at the same time.
I think what he, well, I think what he was saying, build a, a brick and mortar home and then a shop, kind of like they did, I think that's kind of where I was hearing that. Not that they opposed a shop, they just kind of upset about the whole thing being metal, I guess. That's the way I took it.
Okay, well, well, uh, there's at least four homes in Phase Four that are not brick. My, one of my next door neighbors is a log cabin.
Uh, I, I guess I worded it wrong. I just meant a conventional type house.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Anybody else, Steve, either in opposition or is there anyone? Gentlemen, let me, I, I want to correct something that I said. Obviously, when I said all, that was a mistake. Um, it's obvious that not all executed the document that we asked for. But as a, a matter of background, we asked Mr. Taylor to secure some type of written acknowledgement from those, uh, residents of the part of the subdivision where this particular proposed use would be located. That's Part Four of Le Bourgeois, so there was no, there never has been, never was a requirement that Mr. Taylor go to see everybody in all of Le Bourgeois. It was the specific part that has separate restrictive covenants that allegedly are applicable to the, to this property and others. Those would be lots forty-seven through seventy-one of Le Bourgeois Subdivision, Part Four. That's the, the lots that are incorporated in that particular section. I agree with Ms. Curry that there's some question as to whether or not the restrictive covenants that we are referring to are actually in force and effect. There is a dispute as to whether or not they're even enforceable. But as an, out of an abundance of caution, and so as to not put Mr. Taylor in a position where this board would, uh, conditionally approve a use that only set him up to be sued privately under the restrictive covenants, we asked them to go ahead and secure some sort of written acknowledgement that we could put in the land records that if those covenants apply, if those covenants are enforceable, there is a requisite number of individuals who live in that part of the subdivision who have indicated they're fine with this. In other words, there would be enough signatures on record to reflect that they can change the covenants. And so that's what Ms. Curry drew up, and that's what Mr. Taylor secured, and I believe, um, all but, you know, maybe two or three lot owners out of some twenty-four total indicate, did not indicate that they were in agreement with changing the covenants as on file.
So, I thought some of these...
Yeah, so you've got a couple of folks, Mr. Smith, I believe, would be one, uh, and I forget the gentleman's name, the other, uh, who came forward. Uh, Mr. Ellison, um, indicated, well, I don't want my name associated with that anymore now that I know what's going on. Even if you remove those two lots, they still meet the sixty-five percent requirement to, to amend the restrictive covenants if that's what they chose to do. And so it's, it's clear to me that the issue of the restrictive covenants is not an issue that this board should concern itself with anymore. There is a requisite number of lot owners in that part who've indicated they're fine with this proposed use, and so I would dispense with that. And I, I want to add, this board does not enforce private restrictive covenants. It has not ever done so, in, as far as I'm concerned, it won't ever do it. Uh, this was simply a, a measure of safety that the staff took to make sure we weren't setting Mr. Ca, Mr. Taylor up for a, a lawsuit that could be filed against him by either a property owner in this part or an HOA. And so he did what he needed to do there, uh, and so I'm satisfied as far as the restrictive covenants is concerned, the board doesn't need, even need to consider that. That doesn't mean that the board should not go forward and consider whether or not to grant a conditional use for this proposed use, because it is in fact RE One in our zoning context, and we do not allow metal buildings in RE One. And so this board is going to ha, in order for this proposed use to go forward, this board has to act on the conditional use request. Anytime the board, uh, is ready to move on that action, we can end this public hearing, and y'all can take action. The staff does have at least one condition that we believe is appropriate, and that would be a, the condition that the use cannot ever be used for anything other than Mr. Taylor's private residential use. It can ever be a commercial use of any kind. There cannot be a business operated out of that location. It has to be private, personal use of the property owner, and that would be a condition that we would ask be imposed.
This is a tough one.
You said we actually don't approve this RE One.
What, the, a metal building exterior is not allowed in, in RE One in order for it to happen, and there are a number of situations across the county where this board has conditionally allowed a metal building in RE One. You have the authority to do that. It just has to be done by way of conditional use.
So, the metal building he showed us, did we do a permit on that, or did they just build it?
Uh, that small thing, I, the girls looked, um, they're listening to the baby, they don't see anything of that address.
So, but basically, somebody came in and built it without our approval, you know?
What are you talking about?
That metal building.
This, no, storage building?
No, the first one.
This house.
Oh.
Oh, oh. Yeah. That's got some age on it.
Yeah.
I mean, I've seen it, but, uh...
Yep, the, the use on Bragg Street that y'all provi- provided a conditional use for, uh, tho- that was done, uh, because it's not a part of subdivision development. That's, you know, that's a separate piece of property. It just ha- happens to be located immediately adjacent to, uh, La Bouishwa. Yeah, it's, it's actually, uh, it's, it's outside the boundaries of La Bouishwa as a subdivision development. It's just immediately adjacent.
Well, I know from your perspective, you were wanting to get signatures for him being sued. Myself, I'm thinking of what I wanna live next to, and if my neighbors didn't want it, I, I wouldn't want it there, you know? So, I, I'm not gonna be in support of this. Y'all can vote for it, it's, it's tough, but I, I just can't do that. So, I'm gonna make a motion to deny the request.
Do, should we close the public hearing?
I think everybody here is voting.
Okay. Uh, then let the record reflect, the public hearing is closed, and, and now it would be appropriate to take action. Mr. Bishop's motion is on the table, it's to deny the request.
Second.
Motion, uh, to deny the request from Mr. Bishop, second by, uh, Brad Skalhun. All in favor, say aye.
Any discussion?
I got one.
He seconded.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Huh? Well, yeah. My gosh, how much more discussion? We have discussion for thirty minutes. Yeah, go ahead. Any discussion?
Yes. Mr. Taylor, I would be glad to look at this, and a lot of other places in Rankin County, District Four. It would be glad to have you. Uh, I, I s- I sort of understand these people that have come up here and said, "We don't want this" because of what might happen in the future. And I understand what you're saying is, you've got something that's even worse than what I do, and you're saying what I might do. I understand, but, uh, we've got motions and so... Anyhow, you've got your plans, and you know what you want, and I, I think it'll fit somewhere else. So, that's all my discussion.
Okay, had a motion, second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Right, that, that matter is completed.
Alright.
Uh, Mr. President, the next item under the, uh, under my section is, uh, Item H. That's the public hearing on the Darrell and Danielle Mitchell conditional use permit at 686 Andrew Chapel Road. That's District Four property. Uh, Darrell and Danielle Mitchell are seeking a conditional use permit to place a 2021 thirty-two-by-eighty manufactured home at 686 Andrew Chapel Road. This is a four-point-eight-five acre parcel of family land. Property is zoned RE One. Manufactured homes may be allowed in the RE One zone in hardship, temporary, or emergency situations. Mr. Mitchell's mother is elderly, and he needs to live close to support her and help keep the property maintained. Home will be placed on a concrete slab, will be skirted with brick. If approved, his mother will deed him one-point-five acres of that four-point-eight-five acre parcel for the home to sit on. We received one call in opposition due to the recent construction of a site-built home in close proximity. So, we'll open that public hearing, and I will ask for anyone who is in opposition to the Darrell and Danielle Mitchell conditional use permit request to come forward this time. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition. I believe Mr. and Ms. Mitchell are here, if you have any questions. Uh, otherwise, we can close that public hearing and move forward.
Okay. Alright, now a motion.
Motion.
Much approved by Steve.
Second.
Second by Jay. Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I mean, whenever we did this, didn't, wasn't there a lot of other manufactured homes around there?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay. Yeah.
Yes, I thought...
Just be aware that somebody is gonna be, uh, watching, whatever. Keep it clean, keep it neat, you know, but...
Make it your home.
Yeah.
If I, if I may, I, I forgot to ask you guys to make a part of your motion, one condition, and that is that no additional manufactured housing can be placed on the four-point-eight-five acre parcel. So, that would be a condition that needs to be to the motion. I don't know who made the motion. Steve, did you make that motion?
I did, yes.
Do you mind, Steve, if we place that as a condition in your motion?
Y'all okay with that?
I want it there.
You okay with that? Yes, you know, you understand that, okay. Alright. Alright, motion by Steve, second by Jay. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye? All opposed?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Alright.
Didn't take long, let's keep on moving.
Yeah, more like that. Uh, the next item, item I, Mr. President, is a public hearing for the James and Marcia Beasley, Beasley, uh, dimensional variance at 151 Woodlands Glen Circle. This is a District Two property. James and Marcia Beasley are seeking a dimensional variance of four feet for an accessory structure that was built within one foot of the rear property line at 151 Woodlands Glen Circle in Castle Woods subdivision. Castle Woods is inside the Reservoir Community Zoning Overlay District. The Beesleys replaced an existing deck and seating area with a wooden cover-built, cover-built on the same footprint that had been there for years. The RCD regulations require an accessory structure to be at least five feet from the rear and side property lines. Uh, we, the staff has received two calls in opposition because the Beesleys did not get approval, uh, before construction, which is, uh, uh, allegedly against the covenants of the subdivision in Castle Woods, where this property is located. Alright, so we will open that public hearing. Uh, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the James and Marcia Beasley dimensional variance request at 151 Woodlands Glen Circle?
I am.
Okay.
Alright, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
I sure will. My name is Keely Woodfield, and I live at 427 Woodland Circle. Um, first of all, I understand that he's asking for a variance for this setback, and I'm not sure if you guys have seen the pictures or, you know, how much you're aware of this structure.
Is this the one on the golf course?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is this one that the patio...
Got a pool and a poolhouse and all that?
Yes, sir.
And this is the one that patio was there, and it was a gazebo constructed over the patio that was existing there?
That's not the truth of the story. But that's, I heard the meeting last week, when y'all discussed it on the twenty-ninth. And, um, uh, what you have been presented is not the case at all. Um, I come to you because I understand that this board has the authority to grant a variance against the ordinances. And I'm assuming, we're talking about the ordinances that was done in, like, two thousand and thirteen?
The RCD overlay district.
The overlay district. Is that the same one that was amended in Jul- June of last year or July of last year? Cause I kinda got confused on that. Okay.
We might have made a variance to it.
The zoning ordinance of Rankin County revised July sixth of two thousand and twenty?
We made some changes to the total ordinance, but we didn't do anything to the warning or the text of the RCD of that section.
Okay, cause I was just kinda confused on where we are now, cause there's like a whole bunch of different residuals, and when I was reading all through there, it was talking about, like, twenty-foot setbacks from the fence. So, I was kinda confused if we were talking about a five or a twenty.
Accessory structure, that's the first thing. This is not the dwelling, so don't get confused with setbacks, and it may apply to dwellings versus accessory structures.
Okay. I thought it read accessory structures, but I could be wrong. Well, my point is, is in two thousand and thirteen, roughly, the Rankin County Board of Supervisors enacted an overlay district, if I am correct. And the purpose of this district was the fact that there was neighborhoods with inside Rankin County that had covenances that were no longer enforced due to non-active homeowners associations. So, the fact that the homeowners didn't care about their property anymore, you guys took it upon yourself to better Rankin County and come up with some ordinances in order to improve the property values of the district. Um, even brought into the, uh, utility permit where residents now have to pay money. And from what I recall, cause it's been a long time, and I had just moved to Rankin County at the time, the purpose of the hundred dollars was to fund and support kinda this overlay district. So...
Not really.
And, and I could be wrong on that, okay? So, my point is, is that this particular homeowner built a structure. And while I understand completely and wholeheartedly that the Rankin County Board of Supervisors is not in charge of our covenances, that is our job as a homeowners association and a board to enforce. These are covenances that are filed inside of Rankin County. It is a requirement by this board, no matter what new developer comes. Y'all have made huge strides to better the growth of Rankin County. And all that I ask is that you help follow it. We are the largest, we are fourteen-hundred homeowners live inside of our HOA. Fourteen-hundred. It is ran by a volunteer board of nine people. Nine people give our time for free to help run this. I have, feel like we have a great partnership with Renee. When we get things that are really troublesome, I've called Kathy. She helps me on things that come in that district. I don't feel like I bug them entirely too much. So, we try to do a good job. And my fear is that if you just wave a magic wand and give this man a variance, that you will be opening Pandora's box, that my homeowners can come and do whatever they want and come to you and ask for permission later. So, to give you a little bit of the backstory, Mr. Beasley, who I thought would be here today to speak on his behalf, lives on the golf course. And he is correct, when he built his home, there was a little bench, low bench structure. I don't know if y'all saw that picture or not. So, when he bought his home, there was a structure there, and...
When he buys home, and I don't mean to rush you, but we are limited on time.
Well, he bought it in two thousand and eighteen, okay?
Okay.
And, um, he discussed with a board member that he wanted to expand the structure. The board member told Mr. Beasley, "You need an ARC application." So, he did not choose to do that. Instead, he chose to do it himself. Wednesday before Thanksgiving, the day before Thanksgiving, I get a phone call from a homeowner that this guy was building a shed. I called and spoke to Mr. Beasley. He told me he was replacing a few rotten boards, and that his contractor told him he did not need approval from the homeowners association. I asked him to stop until I returned home on Monday so that we can discuss it. He chose not to stop. Instead, he chose to build. We went through all of our steps. We sent him notices, we sent him fines. We continuously asked this man to please fill out an ARC application. He did not. Our attorney sent him a letter and a fine to remove the structure. My attorney advised us to come speak to Renee to get a copy of the permit. When I came to Renee, there was no permit. So, he put my rules aside and disregarded those rules, the covenances. But then he put your rules aside, too, and disregarded them. So, it took a while for Renee to schedule an appointment and meet, and you can ask her, I bug this to her every other week, to try to stay on top of it, because meanwhile, after he got the letter from the attorney, he then wanted to meet with us. But our attorney said, "Let's see what the county does first." So, that brings us here today because I know that you have your rules and I have our rules. I'm asking you not to give someone permission after the fact, when he knew he was breaking the rules.
Do you have any documentation, any of these things you're just saying?
Um, what documentation of what? I mean, I've got the documentation.
Well, I'm talking about, like, the letter you sent to him or the attorney sent to him.
The letter from my attorney, yes. And I do believe my attorney also sent a letter to the Board of Supervisors.
I mean, how close are we talking about to the fence?
One foot.
He's asking for one foot.
Oh, he, no, he's one foot from the fence line.
And what, what's the variance, uh, now? Five or five feet?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry, that's a little cumbersome for me right there.
So, we're, we're talking about, he'll be within four feet of the fence?
He'll be one foot from the fence.
One foot. One foot, he's five foot.
This is the backside of the structure.
Well, how come, Renee, how, why, and, and, Craig, why are we involved in this? Why is this, this, this not theirs? Why don't they just take it and enforce their own?
Take it to court. So, there's, there's two, there's two pieces to this. First, and the only piece that involves this board is the res- is the Reservoir Community District overlay that's a part of our zone. He, the structure is in violation of our zoning ordinance in that it is placed, it's sitting four feet too close to the lot line. That's a violation by RCD.
Sounds like he knew about it when he did it.
It's, it's four feet too close to the fence. It needed, it needed to have been situated five feet off of the property line, which, assuming his fence is on the property line, he's four feet too close with his structure, alright? That's the first issue. It's a violation, as it sits right now, it's a violation of the Reservoir Community District setback requirement for an accessory structure. Everything that you've been hearing about, uh, failing to comply with things like asking an architectural review committee for permission, that's not a part of our zoning. That is all HOA restrictive covenant issue. If he is, in fact, too close to the lot line with an accessory structure that's enforcing the restrictive covenants, that's different from what we're talking about. That's, that, that is a private matter involving the HOA and the homeowner. And your action today, addressing the violation of your zoning ordinance, does not impact in any way any of the issues that Ms. Woodfield has talked about, the failure to come to the architectural review committee. All, all of that is still in play to the extent that the HOA and their legal counsel wants to make that an issue. What you do today, if you guys decide, let's say, to close the public hearing, to grant the variance, you've done nothing to damage the position of the HOA to enforce their own restrictive covenants. All you've done is you've eliminated...
They need to deal with it, not us.
You've eliminated Mr. Beasley's problem with Rankin County, alright? Now, I would suggest to you that we need to enforce our penalty provisions that are, that we generally enforce when we find out that somebody has moved forward to do something that violates an ordinance or does not get a permit ahead of time. We, we routinely double those permit fees. We do things to indicate to the individual, "You messed up, and you're gonna have to pay more than you would have had to pay." So, I would encourage you guys to seriously consider that. There needs to be some type of penalty mechanism. But let me restate, so it's clear and on record. All, the only thing before you, the only thing that is germane to your thought process and deliberation today is, how does this violate, how does this use that's in it, in place now violate your zoning ordinance? Forget the restrictive covenants, forget the other issues, forget the neighbor next door who wants to be able to see the golf course. Forget all that stuff. What, all, the only thing before you is, are we willing to give this gentleman a pass, a variance because he's four feet too close to the lot line?
But he didn't, he didn't even ask for anything.
He didn't, he didn't get a permit ahead of time?
I'm, I'm not, I don't think we're really, I'm not really...
Yeah.
I would like to...
And he's not even here, that's the thing.
I'd like to table it and do, go ahead and enforce our permit fee, I mean, our, uh, lack of a permit. The things that we have, enforce that. Table it until the HOA gets all the way through their whole program, and then we'll know how both sides wanna act, and they can bring it back to us, and we can make...
Cause I think this is really y'all's deal.
And I'd like to say one more thing, if you don't, if you don't mind. And I know that, you know, and I know...
Does the board wanna hear more, or is the board ready to move on?
I, I, I think...
I would like to hear, they've put in for a lot of effort to make this place...
I understand that you guys have the right to grant a variance. But we're talking about someone who already has a screened porch, who already has a covered patio, who already has another gazebo. It is not like he could not enjoy his backyard. I've got the picture of a view from the deck to his home. And this is the structure that he is correct, was in place, that we were not aware of. If he would have stopped, we would have been more than willing to work with him... If he would have stopped, we would have been more than willing to work with him, have him come work with you, that yes, the original structure when he bought in 2018 was against both you and us. But he didn't do that. And this is what it was. And you have to admit, this is a big difference in people versus this picture that is there now.
Yes, this is looking at.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
It's not a few rotten boards.
I'm with, I'm with you, it's just, I don't, I'm not really moving on this. After all this. And the fact that he's not even here doesn't speak real good either.
And frankly, because of-
You just assumed it's gonna be-
Because of Daniel's inability to be here today and it's his district and it obviously is gonna affect him most. Steve's idea of taping may be inappropriate.
I'm not doing it.
Suggestion.
And I just wanted to say one more thing.
Here it is, here it is now, Steve. Here it is now.
Boy, I like living in the country.
Yeah.
And, and I mean, and honestly, I mean, I do wanna thank y'all. When this was brought up on the 29th, I believe it was maybe your voice, you know, you had specifically asked if the neighbors were concerned. Um, you know, y'all did ask questions. But unfortunately, our side of the story never went through.
No.
And, you know, I just, you know, I am very passionate about the subdivision. I have worked my tail off. And from the sounds of last week, y'all all play golf there. You know, it, it makes, you know, it, y'all are very familiar with the subdivision. And I think you have to acknowledge that the HOA part versus the non-HOA part, and that's due to homeowners taking pride. And all I wanted was for him to be held accountable for following the rules that you guys fought to put in place. Maybe not y'all, maybe previous board members, but y'all did this to better this community. And I thank you for that because I do feel like it has made a huge difference from when I moved to Rankin County six years ago. And it's not always easy to do the right thing and I appreciate the things that y'all have done in the right direction.
The fact that nothing, just the whole thing that he never came to us, he's never come to you. From what you're saying, you got a letter from attorney says, stop, and he's not. That's where I'm, I'm ready, we can stop it right here.
I wanna wait till Daniel's here.
That's what I'm saying.
Just table it.
Table it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know that he knows all this either.
So, I believe Steve's motion was to table, uh, Steve's second.
Okay.
We, we will table this to an appropriate hearing date that I'm gonna allow-
And you'll be notified.
Ms. Renee to tell us what it will be.
To make sure-
Well, I didn't, we don't know who, we didn't know, but she needs to be aware.
Yeah, your, your regulations only require specific notification to adjacent property owners and also the placement of the placards typically. Although in a conditional use situation, that's not hard and fast, so.
Yeah, that was done on April 21st is when they put the sign in the yard and y'all voted on it on April 29th.
To set a public hearing.
Yeah, y'all set the hearing on 29th, put the sign in his yard, put it in the paper on the 21st.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the public hearing, so that's how I knew about it, I saw it in the paper.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why I had been coming to the other end, waiting for this to hit the table.
Well, June 7th, June 7th. We appreciate the work y'all do anyway, the unpaid work that y'all do, for sure. I know it's a tough job. Hey, you wanna take these?
I've got plenty, a few.
Well, I mean, I just thought, I know you got them in your-
You can Google it on Realtor.com, it has all really good pictures.
I got a motion to table this by Steve, second by Brad. Any more discussion?
For the record, that, that, that setting will be June the 7th, 2021 at 9:00 a.m.
Okay.
I'm mentioning that on the record so that the HOA is noticed through Ms. Woodfield.
You've been notified.
And the neighbors.
You've been notified and the neighbors will be notified and everything. So, now, you know that date.
Okay, and am I supposed to do anything between now and then?
No, that, we're just giving you going, giving you notice, that's when it will be.
Yeah, it'd be nice if you can settle this with Mr. Beasley so we don't have to deal with it. That, I mean-
Your HOA can settle it with him. We, we, I don't, we don't wanna deal with it. It's your HOA.
Okay, well, is there any, um, the fact that the roof is on the structure now, is, isn't that like height rule also? I was assuming he would need a height rule too, or I could be wrong. Is that not, like, he can build up even that close to the fence and put, or is that, could you give me clear decoration on?
You mean the roof is up and now it's closer to the fence than the structure?
Well, I mean, the roof was never there.
Oh, oh, yeah.
I'm not aware of any site restrict, sideline restrictions. We don't have-
Do y'all have that in y'all's?
We don't, but I was reading something and it, you know, I'm not an attorney.
Well, we, we really don't get involved in HOA stuff, so, which here, like you made it clear, we weren't involved in it. We're involved in what our portion is, but this is still something we wish you all could go and get handled.
There, there's not gonna be a height issue, just FYI, there's not a height issue because of the way the measurements are taken. It's, it's compliant with, with any height restrictions that would be in place. So, that's, that's not an issue for the board to discuss. If there's anything in the covenants, that's a separate discussion. That doesn't involve us and it really doesn't need to be, it, it doesn't need to be intruding on your deliberation when we get ready to go on the 7th of June.
If you've got more people that have a problem with this, you might, you can bring them to 7th too.
Okay?
Well, you don't have a problem on Facebook, but in person, that's a difference. Alright, thank you guys.
Thank you. Good job.
So, that, that matter is tabled until June 7th at 9:00 a.m. And it will be brought back up for reconsideration at that time. The record will reflect that no action is taken today.
Hey, she's, we got one more guest.
I was just about to say, she made a good point. June 7th is right around the corner. I don't know if all nine of us would be able to get to meet with him. Can we push that a little bit further?
The problem is the attorney's not gonna be able to move that fast. We've sent legal notice letter to him, but you know how attorneys are, we're supposed to make resolutions. Get resolutions before that meeting for you guys to need to call him on.
Again, the, the private consideration, excuse me, the private considerations with respect to the restrictive covenants, uh, that's, that does not involve this board. It, it's not, it's a non-issue. What's before this board is the reservoir community district overlay regulations. That's what you need to address. Whatever activities are being involved with respect to the HOA on those private matters and with respect to that council does not involve this board's deliberations. And so, I don't, I don't want you guys to, to have that intruding on your time. Uh, it doesn't need to be a part of the discussion, other than to mention that there could be some additional exposure for Mr. Beasley in a private legal setting. He needs to know that and understand that. But outside of that, I don't know that this board needs to consider that. I, I strongly encourage that you stick with the June 7th, 9:00 a.m. setting.
Okay. That part is your part, not ours. Okay. Alright, uh, Mr. Carr here. Go ahead, Craig.
Lord of mercy.
Yeah, well, good point, a lot of good points made.
Okay. Gentlemen, item J, under my section, say continuation of the Duane Carr conditional use permit at Hickory Ridge Road.
Don't you live next to him there? Don't you live on that hole?
Yeah. Uh, at this time, we will-
You wanna sign that petition?
Alright.
Alright.
Gentlemen, this is a continuation of the Duane Carr conditional use permit, Hickory Ridge Road. Uh, Mr. Carr is seeking a conditional use permit to place a 2020 16 by 80 manufactured home on Hickory Ridge Road. 16 and a half acre parcel, family land, zoned RE1A. There are three other homes on the property. Uh, the application was tabled to allow Mr. Carr to obtain proof of ownership of this property. We received a letter from attorney David Moore Jr. stating that after reviewing the land records, it appears that Duane Carr is a co-tenant of, of, of an undivided interest in the 16 and a half acres. He derives his title through his mother, Mildred Smith Carr, who is deceased. There is an unrecorded warranty deed that appears to have been executed by Mildred Smith Carr, conveying her interest to someone named May Thompson that's dated September the 24th of 2012. That document is not recorded in the land records. Um, and therefore, it is not a part of the chain of title. That is accurate, by the way. Uh, unless and until a valid conveyance is recorded in the land records of Rankin County that would divest or transfer the interest of Mildred Smith Carr to someone other than her legal heirs, Mr. Carr has an undivided interest in the subject property. Y'all continued that the document that we required was presented and so at this time, it'll be appropriate to move forward on the conditional use request.
So, he has got access.
Yes. Uh, uh, until challenged, Jared, until somebody other than this board challenges his title to the property through his airship interests, okay? So, he has the right to occupy the premises. He has the right to build on the premises. It's all at his risk. It's all subject to being challenged. It's all subject to being removed at some point. But that is of no concern of this board. If he chooses to take that risk, that'll be on him, not on this board. So, what the board wanted to do is just to make it clear to him, you need to make sure that you feel strongly enough about your interest in the property, that you wanna move forward with this conditional use request, and then the board will act. He's done that. There are some conditions, if I may, the board's ready to hear those. The applicant understands and agrees that just by virtue of the granting of this conditional use, the applicant should not assume that his legal title to the real property that is the subject of his application, nor the granting of a permit, uh, has been conclusively and judicially determined. Uh, the applicant understands and agrees that the Board of Supervisors does not determine matters of legal title to real property. The applicant understands and agrees that nothing contained in the permit addresses the issue of legal title to the subject property. And the applicant understands that the issuance of a conditional use, use permit does not imply that the applicant is the owner of the real property. And so, the applicant understands and agrees that should it later be determined that the applicant is not the title owner of the subject, subject property, the applicant may be required to vacate the property and remove any fixture that's placed there. So, we're gonna make that a part of the minutes of this proceeding. It'll be a condition. Uh, Ms. Lawrence already has this language. It'll be a condition to the granting of his permit should the board choose to move forward. So, with that, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Duane Carr conditional use permit. Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter. And so, we would propose that conditions, or those conditions specifically as a part of your deliberation.
No. He still has come to us for a permit to build anything and then we can decide on any, what's height, access or whatever, anything else. We can decide, this is just saying that he can build there if he wants to. Right. I know, right. I knew that, but I mean, we can make sure he's got enough setback.
He'll still have to have a call verdict. He'll still have to meet the setback requirements. He'll still have to meet all the health department requirements, Jared, all that's still employed.
So, this is just saying he can build there.
Yes, sir.
His own risk.
About 16 acre roughly parcel.
Yes, sir.
And he has an undivided interest in half of it.
Actually, I think it's a third.
A third of it.
Yes, sir. I, I believe there's three heirs at law that are, that are employed.
So, if he goes in there and picks this big oak tree or con tree and says, I'm gonna put it right there, there's a good chance that two of the other people are gonna say, it's where I wanted mine. And then, here we go. But I mean, I know that's not on us.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, I'm with him.
Yeah, until, until the land is partited, until it's divided among the heirs, nobody has a claim to any particular spot. They all have a claim to all of it.
And the one is claiming all of it.
And he can decide for himself what part of the, all of it, he's gonna occupy because he can, he can be in any of it. At some point, they need to decide, otherwise it's gonna be totally unworkable. They need to decide, what part do you want? And what part do I want? And how are we going to divide that? And then somebody needs to help them get it divided. That's the ultimate solution.
Alright, so we're not at any risk in approving this. Let's at least let him move forward.
Specifically not with your condition. That's right.
He's went through a lot of trouble.
Yeah.
No doubt.
Alright, well, I mean, he's determined to be there. Alright, well, I make the motion approve it.
Second.
Motion approved by myself, second by Brad. In discussion, on papers, aye, I oppose, man.
Item K, gentlemen, is a public hearing on the Southern Tire Recycling Request for Amendment to the Rankin County Solid Waste Plan. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak on the Southern Tire Recycling Request for Amendment to the Rankin County Solid Waste Plan. Park, you have anything to add to that? He has no comments. This is nothing more than your opportunity and the public's opportunity to give a comment about the request. I see no one here. We will close that public hearing and it will be, we have one call on it? Okay. Uh, we'll note that for the record, one phone call on the request. Uh, hearing no further requests for comment, we will close that public hearing.
Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Actually, there's no action that's gonna be taken at all, Jared. We just open the hearing, call for comments, close the hearing. So, it'll be noted on the records that we held our public hearing.
Alright, move forward.
Uh, item L is a discussion and potential action regarding the county's policy in applying applicable, applicable building codes and inspection requirements to renovation or new home construction that uses lumber milled from trees growing on the real property where the structure will be renovated or constructed. And consideration of any conditions that should be applied to any exemption from normal inspection protocols or building code requirements. I've had a, a few inquiries, I would say, in relatively recent days, more than likely driven by the price of lumber, the price of construction materials, asking about this issue. If I've got timber on my property where I want to either renovate a structure or construct a structure, if I've got timber on the property and I'm willing to mill it and I'm willing to use that as a part of the construction materials, how is it impacted by your building code requirements? Typically, in your building code requirements, and, and we are enforcing, I believe, is it 2018 or 2012? We, we enforce the, uh, the Uniform Building Code, uh, requirements set forth in 2012. Those code requirements address certain issues of building construction. They have to meet certain standards. That's easy enough to do when your inspectors are able to actually visibly see markings on the framing lumber specifically. Let's talk about that first. They can see the markings. They know the grade of that lumber because it's graded at the factory. And so, they're able to make some determinations by line of sight that are quick and easy to make, knowing that that construction, that material meets the minimum standards under the building code. Where lumber is milled on site from timber standing on the property, it's not, obviously, it's not graded. Uh, more than likely, it will not be pressure treated. Uh, and so, there are issues with the, uh, the consistency of the structure, with the minimum load capabilities of that material, uh, with the durability of that material, the test resistance of that material, the quality of the material, you don't know, it's, it's much harder to determine things like knots or, uh, impacts of rot that are within the tree. It's, it's harder to make those determinations because it's simply not graded in, in any degree. So, there are some issues, some safety issues, some life safety type issues that are impacted in this situation. The question is, and has been raised, for the limited purpose where it is on-site timber, milled on-site and used by the individuals who own the property for their personal use in the house. It's not, it's not made available for resale. Uh, it's, it's not put into the market or the stream of commerce in any way. It's used on-site in the construction. In those limited situations, uh, what is the board's pleasure about enforcement of the building code standards?
What I'd like to say, the lumber that you mill is gonna be a true two inches. A two-by is two inches. Most of it is better than what you buy. You go up to the Sutherland or wherever and you dig through a stack to find a board that doesn't have a knot on it. And then, the, all the old structures, and we got someone in our place that built in 1935. They built out of all that rough stuff. Um, they're still there. I, I think we're getting a little too hard to, to start saying you gotta go buy that lumber because it's not, and you're talking about pressure treated. The only pressure treated is gonna be something that's gonna be used outside or where it needs to be. Uh, yeah, so.
So, what, what else do they do to-
So what else do they do to suds that, other than they make sure it doesn't have knots in it? What else is needed whenever they go and get graded?
Yeah, when they kill, when they put it to kill, they, they remove the moisture and insects.
No, we're talking, not talking treating lumber.
No, no.
You've got to be under nineteen percent moisture. And that's why they put in the kiln, the kiln, and it, you know, it removes the moisture and it removes the insects.
But you can stack it and dry over a period of time.
Over time, that is correct.
How is our inspector supposed to know if it's?
You can send it to the kiln.
You can, you can send it to a kiln.
How, how are our inspectors, you know, somebody, we start getting people doing this, how are they supposed to know if it's meeting the requirements of the moisture content?
Honestly, if they could build their own house with it, that's their problem.
I don't think you're going to have.
It's solid, two people a year. Man, that's some, that's some of the better, that's better wood that you can buy, after it dries.
One of the things that we have to look at is spanning of lumber.
Right.
And we have tables and charts for certified lumber. It's kind of hard to check a span on a rough cut.
I mean, if you're going to have a two-by-six, you're going to have a two-by-six and a store-bought two-by-six span, whatever. Well, a rough cut two-by-six is going to be wider and thicker, really, it's going to be true two-by-six, where the others will be five and a half by inch or five-eighths.
I think it's the length that becomes the question, Jared, so if the span is, if the span's twenty-seven feet and the maximum load on a two-by-six is twenty-four feet, how is Brian supposed to gauge that?
It'd be the same thing. I don't think they're wanting to deviate from our building codes, they're just wanting to eliminate that third mandate, lumber specialists come out and, and say, "This is a number two, grade two-by-four," or, you see what I'm playing versus a number three.
Piece of wood more than twenty-five.
I mean, I think that's people.
All I'm saying is it just puts a.
I guess it puts liability if we approve it. On those, if we say it passes, I'm kind of a little bit hesitant on approving something like that.
Say that again, what is, what is your concern about this?
Just, if it's not certified, us putting our name on it?
Yeah.
And approving it in that situation, I mean, I don't.
So other than the moisture content, I guess the insects, the termites or something, but if they get it, don't they have to eat their, their house?
They're going to eat the, eat.
I guess they do the slab, they're not the property.
They'll eat Home Depot wood just like him.
Yeah.
Well, getting that, Ron, a two-by-four, a two-by-four sixteen feet long, whether it came out of Home Depot or you cut it, and if you cut it, it's going to be thicker and wider, they're going to be the same strength.
Yeah, but it's also been past the twisting and shrinking, that's something that I'm concerned about, you know, in older, older construction, they didn't use sheet rock. Now we're looking at sheet rock popping.
Right, right.
And issues, and that's just my concern.
I got you.
And as far, like I said, I don't have anything to back me up.
Well, Brian, we, we want, we want to give the options and people start doing this, so what, what do we, how do we make it happen? What, any suggestions on time they need to dry or something, or?
My rule of thumb is a half an inch per year.
They what?
It dries a half an inch per year.
Like a one-inch board would take two years and an air dry.
I guarantee they're not drying that lumber a year.
No, they're drying, they're drying that lumber we're getting out of them. In fact, if it's treated, it's so wet, it's tripping.
It's different than that.
They don't let it run through there long enough to soak it up.
They treat it with air conditioner, they treat it with cool.
It's also, he's not talking about a kiln dry, I think, he's talking about air dry.
Yeah. Do we have a kiln renter, somebody even do that?
They can, Mike Hurst sent some, he sent some wood up there for flooring.
Would they let somebody outside from use it?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'm all, I'm good with it, I just, you know, if we let these guys do it, I mean, there may be a whole bunch more possibly come too, you know, so.
They want castle woods and pick trees down and use it there.
Yeah, we just need to know all of our options.
So let me introduce a couple of just slight complexities, because I think the default setting is, hey, tell them we're not going to certify anything, and we're not going to put ourselves in a position of being liable for your choice of building methods, right? We could say that, the issue then becomes, what about the five-year-old that is living inside the structure that you quote-unquote didn't really inspect? And how do you explain that in a later lawsuit filed for allowing or providing some level of allowance, permission to go forward with that construction that you knew on the front end would be inadequate, and now this five-year-old who didn't get a vote has been hurt, injured? What do you do?
They're going to break and fall in.
Let's see, I mean, we're not having to, let's see what other people are doing, on both sides of this.
Well, I can tell you that by state law, Pearl River County has been notified by the state legislature that they cannot enforce their building codes in just the very situation that I presented to you. There is a section of building code enforcement in state law, Title seventeen, you can go look it up yourself, seventeen-two-five, there is a, there's a subsection in there that says, "If you live in Pearl River County, knock yourself out." You can build it out of your lumber, you can mill your lumber, you can construct your house, and the county cannot enforce its building codes on you. That's only applicable to Pearl River County, but that's an example where somebody in Pearl River County felt strongly enough to go to the state legislature and get that put in there.
Is it, are they, do they have zoning?
The county won't go let them do it.
They have zoning there?
Apparently they do, otherwise there'd be no need for a statute telling Pearl River County.
Except for there's no zoning, they can do, build whatever they want to build.
Well, the ones I've talked to are fine with getting inspected, I mean, there's probably going to have to be some blocking put in, and then, of course, Brian knows all of that, and it, they wanting to follow the building code, but they just want, if they, they feel like if they live on their property, own timber on their property, timber prices have not went up like lumber prices have, they want to mill their own.
Gone down.
But I guess I just need to, I just need to be approved to look at it the same way. It's two, it's two different things, I'll have to look at it the same way I look at a certified.
My biggest concern would be the drying part, that'd be my biggest concern.
I think if somebody's investing in building and milling their own lumber, they're going to take adequate procedures to do.
I, I would also, before I was about to do it, I'd want Brian to have some training on how to look at it and what really can go and what can't go.
It must be something out there that others are doing. Well, maybe they don't have zoning, though.
I would, I would also, I, I think that's an excellent point, because as we move forward with this, we're going to have to probably change with the times, or at least consider that, and figure out ways to enforce it, or to provide for life, health, safety, that's our number one issue, it's got to be a life safety issue for us to get exercised about it, otherwise we just let it go. But we've got to figure out a way to provide for life, health, safety considerations while at the same time providing options for landowners to be able to use the timber that they're growing on their place. It makes sense to me that, that if there's a way to do that without implicating the county's liability, we ought to look at it, and so what Brian's telling you is accurate, it's that it's hard to know whether or not there is a life safety issue when you don't have the confidence about a milling grade on the lumber that you can plainly see. It's, it's a blind man's guess as to whether or not a sixteen-foot two-by-six meets minimum load standards.
But we're not trying to change the standards, we just go by the standards that the building department, we got in codes now.
And Brad, what, what's missing in that is, how long has it been since it was put on the ground, how long has it been drying, what is the moisture content of that?
Well, they got a, they got an instrument that you buy for a hundred dollars to tell you how much moisture is in that lumber.
And the grade is where the problem is, all your span charts are set up by grade, different, different grades.
Yeah, number two, number one, yeah.
And that's where Brian just hung up, we don't know.
I know it sounds crazy, but every piece of the house is tested by a third party, every piece of it, plumbing, electrical, lumber, shingles, sheet rock, everything's tested. Every, every part of it is, is been approved for that use. So like I said, I just need something to allow me to do that.
Yeah, I'm almost of the opinion, Steve, this goes back to your point, I'm almost of the opinion we're better served to not sit, send Brian out with, with the request, just do the best you can.
No, I agree.
That, that puts him in a totally no-win situation. I'm almost of the opinion that in these cases, we say, you know what, we're going to follow the leadership of the state that felt strongly enough to say to Pearl River County, forget your building codes when it comes to this issue, that tells me.
As far as your lumber, we're not the rest of it.
That's correct, as far as I'm concerned, there's no reason for us not to follow that in Rankin County. If you're, if you mill it from your own property, you dry it to your satisfaction, and you build, construct, renovate out of that, we will not enforce our building code on that particular segment of the construction. That way Brian's got a bright line rule, did they mill the timber on their own property, did they dry it to their satisfaction, and are, is, are they using that in a structure that is for their personal use? You answer those three questions, he's done.
And make them sign, make them sign an affidavit.
Make them sign a document, just to put in the file.
They can cut it, though, and have someone else mill it for them, it doesn't mean they got to buy their own mill.
As long as, Jared, the key is, it's, it's failed, it's owned by them, it's failed there, it's dropped there, it's sawn up there, it's dried there, and it's going in a house there. The, the, there, 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 all that stuff.
Right now, fine, it's not worth cutting.
I would also suggest strongly that you indicate, none of that on-site mill timber can be sold.
That's right.
Or given to any third party, it's got to stay on that site.
Right.
Used in a facility on that property.
Well, there's a lot of, we call them little, you know, mills out in the country that you can go buy a rough cut to build a catch pen, so, and I have to, I mean, you have to pay for that.
This is, this is a dwelling, yeah, this is a dwelling situation, Steve, so, this would be, this is a way to make it clear to anybody, you're not going to set up a timber mill, a sawmill, and sell it out to the public, because none of that's been graded. Exactly, for, for any purpose.
Well, yeah, you can, I've said, I've floor truckers with it all the time.
Yeah, so I'm finding, as long as it's not going for another dwelling somewhere else, I'm good with that.
That'd be hard for sketch, though.
There's fifteen or twenty, probably more than that sawmill running right now.
Oh, yeah.
With lumber going all over.
Everywhere.
I mean, it's, a two-by-four costs you ten bucks now, two-by-four about eight.
Yep.
You know how many two-by-fours in a house? Eight foot long?
Yep.
I feel like we need to do what we need to help our folks in Rankin County, if they want to mill their own timber on their own property and build their own house, we need to make it where we can do it.
If, if the board is ready to act on item L, it would just simply be a motion to, to deviate from the standard building code inspection regimen for those specific items that I mentioned I'll get with Jess, and we'll make sure that it's papered correctly in the minutes.
Keep Brian out of any trouble.
Yep, and I, I will have to work with Brian and Renee to, to provide for some sort of document that can be put in the file that shows that the reason that there was not a typical building inspection for the framing stage, I guess is probably what we're really talking about here.
Well, no, I mean, because you still need to look at the frame in itself, on sixteen-inch centers with blocking, but we're not doing, worrying about the grade of the lumber.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we, I can still treat the inspection the same way. I'm just, I'm just going to have to look at it as it is, like it's certified lumber.
They're going to learn, though, it's going to be hard to set sheet rock smooth on rough cut stuff, because it's.
Be bored up or whatever they want.
Well, I mean, if they go put sheet rock, they're going to figure that out, that's going to be tough, because it ain't going to come out.
We'll, we'll work on a, a little document, an acknowledgement document at some time, but the property owner will simply acknowledge that the timber, the lumber, has not been inspected as per our typical standard inspection for grading, for load tolerance, for moisture content, those kinds of things, Brian and I will work on some language, where they can at least acknowledge back to us, and it's in the file, they knew that this was a different type of construction methodology that the board's accommodated.
Yeah, you're right, just something to keep you out of trouble.
So I just need a motion.
We allow rough cut lumber, and we see that most every, I mean, every house, but it is only for aesthetics, it's not for.
Right, like a beam or something, exposed beam or post.
Just looks, if they have a beam up there, they have that being reinforced by an LBL underneath it or whatever, it's just for aesthetics.
I got you.
So I, I just need a motion that allows us to deviate in accordance with this discussion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Brad.
Second.
Second by Jay, any discussion, all papers say aye, all vote.
So it's clear, we're talking about property owned by the, by an individual in Rankin County, timber owned by the individual in Rankin County, milled on-site.
No, it's going to have to be milled on-site.
Well, it's, the, the, the issue that we have is that now you're getting into a situation where some third party is selling timber. And, and how do you enforce that? So the specific issue here is, if it's your timber, and you're milling it, and you're drying it, and you're installing it in the structure, you meet our deviation.
Yeah, because you can get people to bring them, they get milled to your site, they'll do that, yeah, okay, that's fine, yeah.
Okay.
There's a lot of them will do that, mill it at their own site.
How, how you going to have it dried on your property?
You stack it up in a barn.
For a year?
Yeah.
Well, I mean.
Or take it somewhere and have it dried.
I don't know how you're going to have it dried, that's the problem, I agree there.
I don't think they're going to use a crooked, you go down there and look at the ones that's dried that you buy.
Thirty of them to get one.
Yeah, they got it knotted, that big in a two-by-six.
But you can take them to camp.
That's only, I don't know.
Go back and pick them up and dry it in a straight, yeah, but that's taking them away from the place.
I don't think he said you couldn't take it away to be dried, you just can't get, take a mill.
What I don't want to see is us have milling operations set up to sell to the public.
That's right.
That's, that's what we're trying to make clear.
Right, I don't know how, yeah, that's going to be hard to monitor, too.
And you're really only here talking about building code and inspection on a dwelling.
If you drive up there and see a pile of rough cut lumber, you go, "Where'd you mill that?" You can't use it.
Can I, can we move on? Can we all good? We can call it good? Did y'all vote?
Yes.
All right, item M, adoption of revised resolutions and authorization to execute revised interlocal agreements related to the general obligation bond refunding for the four tiffs in Flowood, Margreath Street, Lake LeCombe, Dogwood Festival, and Dogwood Promenade. Y'all have already acted on this, you did it on March the third. When Flowood got all their stuff finished and all the paperwork submitted, they turned it into the AG's office, the AG's office wrote back and said, "We don't like some of the language."
Oh, really?
Correct. And so they required a revision to the documents, and all you were doing is taking the new documents, having the board president sign the new documents, and we'll send them back to Butler Snow to be handled like we did in March, that's all we're doing.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion approved, Bishop, second. Steve, any discussion, all papers say aye, all vote, okay.
Item N is some cleanup, this is with respect to our agreement between the Board of Supervisors and Evergreen Water to relocate their water infrastructure on the Andrew Chapel Road project, you're ratifying the issuance of a check representing fifty percent payment of the agreed-upon relocation reimbursement, one hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. We forgot to ask you to authority to issue the check the last time, so you're ratifying the fact that we've already issued the check.
Motion.
Motion by Steve, Jay, second by Steve, all papers say aye, all vote.
I wasn't sure Steve was going to answer that check or not. All right, item O is a ratification of a declaration of emergency effective May eleven at ten a.m., that's related to the cyber attack on Colonial Pipeline in Houston that caused the fuel supply disruption to the eastern and southeastern U.S. You're just ratifying the fact that that emergency declaration was made on May eleven, and it dates back to that time, and covers all purchasing related to fuel for that period of time.
Motion.
Motion approved by Steve, second by Jay, any discussion, all papers say aye, all vote.
I do not have an executive session today for you guys, congratulations, but we do have, we do have. I do not have an executive session today for you guys, congratulations, but we do have, we do have four items under different.
Well, hang on then, so hang in there. But then how are we gonna discuss our resolving our money with the contractor through the circuit, I mean, for the chance rebuild?
When we get the final pay application discussed, we will bring forward to you guys the subject matter.
I thought you were going to have a meeting with them.
Uh, not yet, because we're waiting on a final pay application, which we got at the end of last week.
Okay, so you hadn't looked at it yet?
No, sir, I hadn't even seen the final pay application yet.
I know we're gonna be calculating some LDs, so.
That's correct, and that's what I mentioned previously, you've got forty-five days from the day you receive the final pay application, which you haven't received yet.
Yeah.
You have forty-five days to consider it before you respond. So, we have more than enough time, and they made us wait, so we got more than enough time, uh, to review that. I wanna make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row before we come to you guys and say, here's what we think.
Well, I got a call from a judge yesterday that wasn't real happy about our decision on paying that gentleman that much money for justice court.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
It seems like he's making more than judges now.
Oh.
And they're getting their pirs and everything paid for, and.
So, just FYI, you guys don't get to set justice court judge salaries.
No.
Hello, you guys do not get to set justice court judge salaries, those are set by the state of Mississippi along with your salary. Did you remind him that you're still getting the same thing, Jay?
Actually, we get less than they do.
Okay. Yeah, so, uh, join the club, alright?
Yeah, but he has a valid point.
That's an issue that needs to be taken up with the state.
Well.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
His issue is us paying that gentleman that much money.
Understood.
That's not gonna probably work the hours that he has to work, or they have to work.
I, I don't know, my recollection.
I see we've already adopted it.
Yeah, so, thank you for.
What are we gonna pay him?
We're, we're paying him the same thing that we pay all the other public defenders.
Yeah.
But we weren't gonna, but he, but now we found out we're paying everything for them that we didn't think we were paying.
What, the reality is that what we understood to be the situation with respect to their compensation package is different from what we understood. It's different from that. They are apparently being
I totally got you.
reimbursed for all of the pirs, and we didn't, we didn't appreciate or understand that. So, you, but the clear implication I heard from the discussion, which by the way is executive session, you don't have to be in executive session, so we're not mentioning names here, okay? But, um, if y'all are fine talking about this, I'll move forward and tell you what I recall from the discussion. Otherwise, we need to wait and talk about an executive.
No, I think, I mean, I, I expressed what, why, what our decision was, you know, he just let me know he wasn't happy with it.
Yeah, this gentleman is also available to be used in county court, circuit court, he's a plug and play. He can be used all over the system, he is assigned to justice court, but that doesn't mean that's the only place he can do what he does. So, his value is beyond just what he does in justice court. Any, y'all want any more information on that? Y'all good?
Well, I saw it, it was on our consent agenda today, so.
Alright.
Alright. Okay, Keith, move on fast.
Yes, sir, quickly, uh, item A is, uh, approval, we request approval to assign Wanda Martin as the county's agent, uh, and that's for the ice storm, uh, information submittal.
What if we refuse? You gotta get somebody else to do it. Wanda would hate that, I know.
Most approved.
Most approved by Jay, second by Steve, any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed?
Alright, item B is request approval of renewal of application for the justice court assistant grant uh, through the Department of Public Safety for the juvenile and family courts uh, in the amount of one hundred and eighty-six thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars, uh, ending June of next year.
Most approved.
Most approved by Jay.
Second.
Second by, uh, Steve, any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed?
Thank you. Item C is the approval, uh, to accept the DEQ non-competitive grant uh, in the amount of thirty-five thousand nine hun, five hundred and ninety-four dollars, and authority for the president to, uh, execute the documents.
Most approved by Jay, uh, Brad, second by Jay, all in favor say aye, all opposed?
Alright, and, uh, the final item is authority to purchase, uh, three, uh, police interceptor vehicles for the sheriff's department uh, from the Missouri State, Missouri Highway Patrol, uh, and the authority also for his, uh, staff to pick up the vehicles and pay their travel expenses.
Most approved.
Most approved by Jay, second by Steve, any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed?
Quick enough?
Yep, quick enough. That's good, you're the best one yet, except for Lance, he only had one.
Who's gonna discuss on the, uh, shelters?
Yeah, what we have of that, while we're having a discussion on it, I thought it was mute, subject. Okay, you get, pick up on how he moved now, Daniel's not.
I believe this is a moot point at this point.
Okay.
Uh, the last board meeting, I told you that I had an email that had just come through to proceed to the final application process. That was on a Friday, uh, seven days from that day, uh, the application was due. We had five business days and didn't even know that until the day before the, it was supposed to be submitted, the deadline day. Out of the blue, we get an email from MEMA, says, oh, by the way, we need your completed application. Absolutely impossible, no way to do it. Uh, it, just one component of that on the land, uh, acquisition, I would assume would probably take Mr. Slay probably six months to pull that off. I, I, I don't see how you could do it in five days. Where that came from, we have no idea. Uh, Brian went back and double-checked everything, there is never been this May eleventh date on anything that we have seen.
So, will there be another round of it, or?
That's, that's a great question. They're actually using Hurricane Zeta from September, I believe it was, is where they were going under to get this money. So, uh, the, I don't know, I don't wanna tell you, this whole thing's been like trying to catch a fly with a chopstick.
We scared them off with a map.
I don't know, and, and I have not talked to the director of MEMA, I was gonna wait until, uh, we got through with today, and I was gonna just make a courtesy call to him, just let him know that we appreciate the opportunity to apply.
Let's say this comes, comes again, six months or a year from now, so we use all the paperwork that's already been done, and keep that on file, so y'all won't have to spend.
I don't know, it's in a portal, it, it should be available. Uh, we won't be starting from scratch at that time.
Okay.
So.
I assume that you guys are gonna want to discuss locations and whether or not we've really drawn a bead on where we think the best utilization for them is. And, and at this point, we don't think we've been painted into a corner by what we've submitted, uh, but we probably wanna ask that question, can we revisit the issue of locations now that we've gotta wait for another program, right? So, uh, I, I just wanted to leave that on the table for you guys to at least consider, to make sure you're satisfied and, and happy with the direction that we've got on locations.
I will tell you this, on this hazard mitigation grant money, it is kinda squarely. Uh, I know for a fact, two years ago, we got an email, hey, come on Wednesday, hazard mitigation grant proposals, it's out. We got there, I specifically asked about warning sirens, this was a couple of years ago, and through that little process, I had two weeks to get my notice of intent in with the environmental study. We were gonna, and, and my question was this, you mean to tell me that you want me to go to the Rankin County Board of Supervisors, ask them to go spend fifty thousand dollars on a fast-tracked environmental study, because I'm gonna disturb the ground more than one square inch to put a telephone pole in our right-of-way that we own? You want me to do an environmental impact study on that? Fast-track it, be back here in two weeks.
Yeah, if we spend more on a study, we would the siren.
Exactly. Spend fifty thousand dollars to get an environmental impact study to get ten thousand dollars in grants, makes zero sense, so, there we are.
Do you know of any county that did get some of these shelters?
Not on this round right here, not at all. And, and this wasn't a publicized.
Right, well, I just wondered if maybe that wasn't publicized to everybody.
It might just blown their budget out.
So, I don't know about that. It's.
What, you know, the, the fact is, somebody in the food chain did not, either did not know about a deadline or conveniently failed to mention it.
This is just the month of, uh, getting us hyped up, let us down.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, you're right.
The thing we're about to discuss is the most hyped up, let down. I guess we're gonna discuss it.
I've got.
The Rescue Act?
Well, I mean, I can, I, I was not intending to really get too deep in that, but this would be a good time just to quickly mention.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that stuff's hot off the press, uh, big takeaway, um, nobody knows anything, nobody understands anything. There is no one who can tell you what any of it means, including people that wrote it. Uh, there's no discernible pathway of finding out who can permit us, who, who can we go to and say, this is what we want to do? Would we be in good shape to do that legally, and who gets to decide whether we did it right or not? Who are those people? The only thing we know at this point is, big picture perspective, there is one aspect of the Rescue Plan Act that we believe is the best avenue for this board to get access to the funding that it wants to use for what it wants to use it for. That is a section that's called the Fiscal Recovery Section, try to remember that, fiscal recovery. Uh, and we're driving y'all nuts, because there's different federal things that we're doing right now, and they're all called something different, and it's hard to keep them separated. So, this is Rescue Plan, that's the thirty million dollars, of which we get fifteen, and I think we're trying to get it now. We opened up a portal, and I think we're, we're working to get that done. And so, there's a, there are mechanisms in place now that will allow us to actually request our first fifteen million dollars. The fiscal recovery piece is this, we have to look at what we had in revenue in twenty nineteen and compare that to what we had in revenue for twenty twenty, and the difference between those two, assuming that twenty twenty is less, will be the amount that this board is, uh, is able to use for providing government services.
That'd be roads, bridges, whatever we want.
Yes, providing government services. So, the key here is.
But now, there were some other things that was allowed out, right?
That's correct, there are other things, I don't wanna talk about those right now. Because the truth of the matter is,
That would help us.
literally, nobody can tell you what any of that means and what it encompasses. Water, sewer, broadband.
And storm drain.
That goes in the water piece. You gotta, you gotta hold on tight, cause it's gonna jerk you all over the place, Jay, trying to figure out what fits where. The water piece, we think fits in the water, the storm water piece fits in the water, possibly, but we're still looking at that, not ready to tell you that it does for sure yet.
I don't know, our point I got said pretty straight up, that it was.
When, when the federal government, I guarantee you this, Jay Bishop.
Anyway, I know we're not gonna spend thirty million on doing storm drains, so.
Correct. Jay, when, 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 when the Democrats in Congress passed that, when they said water, they were not thinking about storm drains. They were, they were thinking about water pipes from a water tower going to a house. Okay?
Yeah.
They were thinking about, frankly, City of Jackson.
Mm-hmm, I knew it.
Okay? And so, the City of Jackson will be able to utilize probably everything they get to try to deal with their water system issues. Yeah. So, that, that does not implicate Rankin County. Why? We are not in the water business and never have been, we are not in the sewer business, never have been, and we are not in the broadband business and never have been, and I, we're wrestling now with, how does this impact us, and what in fact are we eligible to use it for?
Well, what can we use?
And we're gonna have to really have some conversations.
So, the car about public safety, you think that was about revenue also?
That's about, that is really about pay, that's about employee salaries, Jay. That's to, that's to backfill your law enforcement for overtime and for additional services that were provided as a result of the virus.
So, if we wanted to, if it's allowed, cause it said essential workers, and it lists about everybody out there.
Yeah.
If, if, say, essential workers qualify, could we give a, like what we did, uh, back before? I know we paid time and a half, but is there a way we could possibly just do a back pay for all that work they put out?
There is a possibility that we can create, this board can create a program that will qualify for use of funds for that purpose. There, there is a possibility, yes. Alright, where, where I'm getting the impression from the board, I think I'm right about this, tell me, Craig, can we spend at least some of this money on roads and bridges? Cause that is what is important to the Rankin County Board of Supervisors, and that's what important to Rankin County. Can we do that? And I'm telling you, right now, the only game in town that I can find in the legislation that is, in my opinion, close enough to a bulletproof yes, is can Laura Oster work her magic and find me losses of revenue in twenty twenty?
That was easy, we had a bunch.
Right.
Is it just twenty twenty? Can we do nineteen also?
No, there is a dedicated frame, timeframe that we have to look within. And I, I wanna mention this, we, we, we asked our staff to pull the stops out and try to figure out how to analyze the revenue streams over that time period to evaluate our qualification, how much do you think, how much do you think? That's an ongoing work in process, we're not in a position right now to tell you. We do believe we have some losses in revenue that we can support, but there is an actual calculation scheme that is set out in this silly statute that we've got to look at and try to figure out how do we make what, how we classify and qualify things fit within this calculator that they have provided to us? And then what does that shake out at the end, at the end? So, the effort that is underway right now is to try to determine losses twenty twenty over nineteen by comparison, determine what loss we encountered and can support. Okay? And then that will be your figure that you will quote, provide government services for.
So, whenever we, uh, had to do reassessment, would that be?
We are discounting that, because that is a, that is a fake indicator of actual losses for twenty twenty. The system is this, let me. Yeah, we, we didn't see any effect in twenty, twenty-one.
It was only be growth.
The, the calculus has to be like this, this is the big picture. How were things going before the virus impacted? How did things go after the virus impacted? Those two things is what you look at, and the, the law assumes that it's static. Tell us how you were doing things in twenty nineteen, and what you were doing in twenty nineteen, what would that have been in twenty twenty if we didn't have the virus? That's how you look at it. So, any impact of reassessment should be eliminated from the calculation. Because obviously, we didn't reassess in nineteen. So, you would do your twenty comparison off of what your nineteen assessed values are, and you'd come up with a number.
I think we had to put the new floors down because of COVID.
We did.
You know?
Scared to.
Playing, you know, COVID had gotten that covered.
You've also got the impact, I don't think they make us count this, but you also have the impact of the state's money under the Relief Act, which is different. You recovered two point one million dollars from, or one point seven million from the state under the initial tranche. Um, and so, that, obviously, that impacted us, and I don't remember exactly when we received that, was that in FY twenty, and we got that money? So, that's got to come out, we, that cannot be, that needs to be removed. That's a, that's an arbitrary impact, it's not really revenue, that's designed to be a reimbursement for expense. So, it shouldn't be treated as a revenue item. We're gonna try to find as much money as we can under that particular segment of this law. There are other segments of the law that we're still working out and trying to figure out what can we qualify for, okay? So, try to focus on the one piece that we think we can make the most hay on, because it's the most free, free to y'all to use. Providing government services is a broad category, so that's where we want to be able to make some hay. Okay? So, that's, that's an extra freebie. Uh, if I could get you guys to consider adding three things to the agenda. Okay, so that's, that's an extra freebie. Uh, if I could get you guys to consider adding three things to the agenda under additional business.
Thought you were done while ago.
Uh, that would be, I, I mentioned no executive, but I, I did have these items.
Okay.
I need you to add three things. One would be permission to advertise on our Gunner Road Improvement Project. I'd like to get permission to go ahead and advertise that construction project. That's an ad. Uh, I need you to add an authorization to advertise for proposals on our old Chance Record renovation. And I need you to add the item that Mike Harrison had to spray the public right away. Those are your three ads.
A motion, Brad makes a motion to, um, add these three items.
Second.
Second by Jay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed.
Alright, I make the motion to approve the advertising for Gunner Road, Chance Record, uh, building and spraying.
And the, the Chance Court, we gonna do that, those columns as an addendum.
Yes, and, and the columns will be an addendum to where.
Yes, an alternate.
Yeah, an alternate, be it. Alright, that's my motion.
Second.
Motion by Steve to, uh, approve this, second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed. Okay.
Was that the ad that y'all?
We've already added and approved it.
Y'all are headed. Good. That's all I had, gentlemen. Thank you.
Did the dump truck situation work out?
Not yet, yeah.
Make a motion recess until June the third, twenty twenty-one.
Alright, motion by Steve recess, second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed.
So Renee, here.
So, can you?
Here's your, uh.